So I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council to order for January fourteenth. If you'd please rise and Joy, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Finley will be joining us in just a moment. Otherwise, I think we're all here tonight. Where are my announcements? By way of announcements, upcoming Town Council meetings, Wednesday, January twentieth is a budget meeting and Thursday, January twenty-first will be an additional budget meeting. Both held in this room at six thirty. Thursday, January twenty-eighth will be our next regular council meeting. And then Thursday, February eleventh is a regular council meeting. Eileen, did you have anything?
A big thank you to the Rotary Club of Merrimack for their generous donation of a thousand N ninety-five masks to the town of Merrimack. I believe that's for the elections?
No, that was just for us.
Just for us. That's awesome.
Rotary Club.
Rotary Club, yep. Chief Duke and the Merrimack Fire Rescue Department are pleased to announce the promotion of Captain Sean Brektel to the position of Assistant Chief of EMS and Fire Operations. Captain Brektel's promotion takes effect on Sunday, January twenty-fourth, 2021.
Excellent.
Very good choice. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Keep losing my agenda, which brings us to comments from the... Oh yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just want to make sure that the public knows that Governor Sununu has recently announced that there's a change in criteria for COVID vaccine administration. One B, which is from December to March, used to be, I believe it was seventy and over with co-mobilities. Now it is anyone sixty-five or over will be eligible for vaccination. You are recommended to go to the website, and I'm going to give it to you in a minute, on or after January twenty-second to make appointments. They're going to start administering them on the twenty-sixth, okay? So a website to be able to schedule is, I gotta find it, newhampshire.gov slash COVID nineteen. Or you can call two one one, Monday through Friday, eight to seven PM, and they will explain how you can schedule, okay? So if you don't have website accessibility, you can just dial two one one and make arrangements. So that's a dramatic difference that everybody should be aware of.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. And that news came out today. That they lowered it from seventy to seventy-five, plus people that have at least two risk factors.
It used to be, but not now. Now it's anyone sixty-five or older.
No, I know, but plus people younger that have two risk factors.
Oh, correct. That's correct.
Can also sign up at that time.
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements or questions on the announcements? Okay. At this point, comments from the press and public. Anybody has a desire to address the Town Council at this point on items of concern? Please come up to the mic. Seeing none, we'll move on. Recognizations, resignations, and retirements. We have quite a few recognitions tonight. Unfortunately, because of COVID and lack of space and people not wanting to get together too much, we don't have a lot of people that want to come into the Town Council meetings to be recognized. But we want to make a special point of explaining that from the Police Department, Chief Brian Lebec is receiving a twenty-year plaque. His date of hire was seven nine two thousand. Police Captain Eric Markey is also receiving a twenty-year plaque. His date of hire was eleven six two thousand. Special Resource Officer Detective First Class Thomas Prentice, a twenty-year plaque. His date of hire being eleven five two thousand. And Deputy Chief Matthew Carlton, a twenty-five-year gift card and Louisville Gold Watch. And Master Patrolman John Dudas, a twenty-five-year gift card and Louisville Gold Watch. Their date of hire, I think, was twelve thirty-one nineteen ninety-five. So thank you very much and congratulations to those individuals. We will get the plaques and things delivered to them, but wanted to point that out. Yes, sir? You absolutely may.
You know, I looked down this list and I've worked with all those off the chief, the deputy chief, the captain.
You need to turn your mic on, please.
The captain, lieutenant, excuse me, detective Prentice, and Officer John Dudas. If I missed anybody here, but this is a real tribute when you look down this list to our Police Department. These are all, from the chief to everybody here, are all good officers and they've stayed with the department. And they're good people and I'm proud of them. I've got to work with all of them and I know the quality people they are. So congratulations and we're lucky to have them around and hope to keep them longer.
Absolutely. And it definitely does show good things that they've been there. That longevity means that they're enjoying their jobs as much as we're enjoying having them with us. Does anybody else have any other comments? Okay. Which brings us to the Rotary Club of Merrimack fiftieth anniversary proclamation. The Town Council to issue a proclamation. It's been signed by everybody, so I'll read it and we can vote on approval. But the Town of Merrimack Town Council proclamation, Rotary Club of Merrimack's fiftieth anniversary. Whereas the Rotary Club of Merrimack was founded on January seventh of nineteen seventy-one. And whereas the Rotary Club mission is service above self within the Merrimack community. Whereas the Rotary Club serves the Merrimack community through annually administering the Independence Day celebration on the Fourth of July, conducting the Turkey Trot 5K on Thanksgiving morning, and by Christmas tree sales and utilizing the funds raised to support area charities, international relief efforts, and nurturing fellowship among its members. Whereas the Rotary Club focuses its services among the following internal committees: Club Service, Community Service, Vocational Service, International Service, and New Generations, which includes the Interact Club at the Merrimack High School. And whereas the Rotary Club hosts annual events honoring the youth of Merrimack with the four-way test speech contest, top ten Scholars Dinner, scholarships to graduating high school seniors, sponsoring Kids Cove, donating the pavilion at Watson Park, recognizing the Daniel Webster Council Eagle Scout of the Year and Eagle Scout Service Project of the Year, supporting the two Merrimack food pantries and Meals on Wheels, and honors businesses and employees in town with excellence in the workplace recognition. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Town Council of the Town of Merrimack, New Hampshire, hereby proclaim that January seventh, 2021, is the fiftieth anniversary of the Rotary Club of Merrimack. Proclaim this fourteenth day of January, 2021, by the Merrimack Town Council.
So move Mr. Chairman.
The motion by Bill to adopt the proclamation and seconded by Barbara. Does anybody have any comments they want to make before we vote? Finley?
I think we've all said it before. They're an amazing group, not extremely large. I guess they're getting a little bit smaller these days, but the work that they perform is just amazing to me. It's, I hesitate to join an organization like that because it's too easy for me to drop the ball. Yeah, so I appreciate everything they've done. The list is lengthy and appreciate it for sure.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we'll go for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Congratulations to the fiftieth year of the Rotary Club. Nancy, you brought it up on the seventh, that was the actual day. And they told us about it in advance, but this was our first meeting to be able to do this. So we appreciate that. I kind of think they're celebrating the month as their fiftieth anniversary. But congratulations to the Rotary Club. Moves me right along, excuse me, to appointments. And first, our appointment for tonight is regarding the special primary election, the deliberative session, and the town meeting discussion submitted by Town Moderator Lynn Christensen to update the Town Council and discuss the details of the upcoming special primary election, deliberative session, and town meeting. Lynn? Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Before I get going on that, I'd like to add one thing to your Rotary list of things that they've done.
Sure.
We delivered four thousand medical masks to St. Joe's Meals on Wheels this afternoon for them to use throughout the entire Hillsborough County with their Meals on Wheels program.
Awesome. Awesome. I understand there were another bunch delivered to the town as well. Is that right? That's great. Thank you very much. This list was written a week or two ago.
This was only done this afternoon.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure that they're going to continue to do great things for the town and we appreciate all the work that they do. So.
Where do you want me to start?
Well, why don't we start with the closest potential, which would be a special election or a primary election on the thirteenth, twenty-third of February?
Okay.
If there needs to be one.
The issue there is, right now, we are taking filings for the party regulars who want to file to run as a representative of their party, which would happen at a primary, just like it does normally. There's also the potential for an undeclared voter, independent, whatever you want to call them, to establish their intent to run on the general election ballot. That can also happen. It's not just Republicans and Democrats that are going to win this. If only one Republican and one Democrat file by five o'clock on Friday afternoon, there will be no primary.
Okay.
So everything would happen on, well, no. There would be no primary on February twenty-third. And if nothing else happens, then the general election will move to February twenty-third.
The special election, not the general election?
Well, no, it's state general election. It's a special election, yes. That would move to February twenty-third, which is very soon. The one exception is if somebody other than a party person submits, they call it a declaration of intent to file with the Secretary of State this week, then they have up until February twenty-second at five PM in order to deliver a hundred and fifty nomination papers with valid voters to the Secretary of State. And if they do, then they go on the ballot on April, in April. And the special election stays in April because obviously you can't determine who's going to be on the ballot on the twenty-third if you're waiting till the twenty-second.
So that person, any other, any independent people would have had to have filed with the Secretary of State their intent by tomorrow evening?
By five o'clock Friday.
Okay.
That's been done.
Okay.
So I went up yesterday and I filed a declaration of intent. I will state right off the bat here, I have no intentions of running. I'm not going to go out and collect signatures. I'm not going to put my name on the ballot, but what will happen is because I did that, Secretary of State has to wait until February twenty-second to see if I produce those papers. And if I don't, I don't go on the ballot. If I do, I do go on the ballot. I'd be crazy, but I... So we have successfully dodged the bullet of having to have that special election moved on to February.
Okay.
Which means we would have two elections, which I see absolutely no reason to do. But that's the way the state law was written, so like I said, we dodged the bullet.
So we still could have a primary theoretically.
We still could have a primary.
Two or more people from either party sign up by tomorrow. They have to sign up at the Secretary of State's office in Concord.
Yep, by four thirty. I think it's four thirty because that's when they close. But either way, they have to go up to Concord and file.
Okay. They can't file here because the town clerk's office can no longer take applications. I just wanted to get that out as clear as we could.
Right.
I'm not sure that's clear, but.
Well, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, this, and this was news to me. As long as I've been doing this, of course, we don't have many special elections.
Right.
But I'm thinking, what do you mean you're going to put the special election on primary day? That's ridiculous. How, but.
Pretty clearly what the law states, yeah.
So in discussing it with a number of people who shall remain nameless, I said, if I do this, will that work? And they said, yep. And I said, okay, I'll be there tomorrow. So my guess is, and from talking to people, I'm not anticipating a primary, but I'm not in the know with everybody. And somebody could walk up there that we have no clue who they are, never heard of them before. They could walk up to the gardener's office and say, I'm going to run.
Put me down, yeah. But it has to be a second person in one of the two parties to cause that to happen.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Well, it has to be.
In order for there to be a primary, there has to be at least two.
Right now, there is only one person who has filed.
Other than yourself, yes.
I haven't filed.
Well, you've filed a letter of intent.
Yeah. There's one person that has filed for the election.
Right.
I've heard rumors. I've heard, seen social media, or I have talked to a number of people on the phone. I won't repeat names because it's all hearsay and I don't know what they're going to do, despite what they say they're going to do today. I'm not hearing of any others, so I'm hoping we can dodge the costs.
Of an election in late February.
Right.
That would be great.
Yeah.
For the town.
Yeah.
Because we have a budget for it. We'd rather not.
Right.
Go to all that hassle, especially with COVID.
That's a significant amount of money and it's a significant amount of effort on the town clerk's part as well as my team's part to run that.
Right.
So I'm hoping we can dodge that one as well and not have the special election moved up to that date, which would give us two again.
Okay. And so the election for that state rep position would be along with the town election?
Correct. We would have three ballots. We'd have a town ballot, a school district ballot, and a state ballot.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Sounds like a plan.
Which is doable.
Right, right. So you end up with three machines at each polling place or just run multiples in?
Probably, only because it's easier for us.
It's just nice to have them separated.
They can all go in all of the machines, but it's easier to sort and store and package everything up at the end of the night if we can separate them.
If we have them separated to begin with, or at least ninety-five percent.
We've had times when one of the machines has gone down and we've had to mix them and we deal with it. But ideally, we have enough machines. I would anticipate still having three polling places and do it like we normally do it, including requiring masks.
Right. Yeah, I understand that. Does anybody have any questions?
Vaccine and no vaccine. We're going to have masks required, so get used to it, folks.
Eileen?
I just read in the Manchester Union Leader earlier this week, it was headline news in that there were restaurant owners and things who were concerned and some of the big box stores were concerned about their employees having to confront people about wearing masks, even though it was a state law. And the Attorney General sent out advice that they are to call the local police. If a person is not wearing a mask, they are to call the local police. And the local police need to try and de-escalate the situation, but in the end, they have to wear a mask.
It's the law, yeah.
Right. And they'll be considered trespassers.
We've done this twice, requiring masks.
Yep.
It has worked well. We've had some pushback, but nobody that has gotten unreasonable.
And we've provided an option for them.
They have an option. I won't refuse them the right to vote or to participate in the deliberative session. But if they're going to be there, they're going to wear a mask or they will have to take the alternative that we provide for them and there's no debate on it. They don't get to say, well, I don't like your alternative. That may be. You've got a choice.
That's what it is, yeah. You've been offered something, yeah.
But like I said, we haven't had a problem in this town. I don't expect to have a problem in this town. Like I said, there's been a few that have been pretty emphatic about their objection to it, but they have gone along with the program.
Okay. Peter?
Just to speak to Lynn's comment, during the presidential election primary up the Upper Elementary School, you guys had me by the door and, which, thank you, by the way. But my job was to point out to people they had to wear masks. And when you pointed, I had probably in the course of a day, maybe ten people. And most of them, when I pointed out that there was an area designated, they weren't happy to go over there. It was only a couple of people that had choice words for me and that was it, so.
Yeah, I think we had two, maybe three at St. John Newman, similarly.
That's the way it was. I had only one that refused to allow the moderator to put the ballot in the ballot box, sits down doing it themselves. And I said, well, you've got a choice. You can stand in this doorway and watch it being done by the moderator or you can put your mask on and do it yourself. They found a mask in their pocket.
Oh, funny.
And they put it on and they came and they put the ballot in the ballot box, walked back out.
I did have one individual walk away. He said he wasn't going to put on a mask and didn't want to go around to the back to where the tent was.
Their choice.
That was his choice. And his wife, with her mask on, went in and bowed him, so.
Their choice. We make it as easy as we can and as safe as we can, so.
Finley?
With that rule, Lynn, how is that accommodated at the deliberative session?
Well, that's a good question. Depends on where, it depends on where you folks decide to hold your deliberative session. Once you determine that, we'll figure out how to accommodate. But if you're going to be in the general room with the general population, you're going to wear a mask.
Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know why we need to make accommodations when it's the law?
I can't forbid somebody, a registered voter, from participating in the deliberative session, just like I can't forbid a voter from voting. I think it's their right and I won't prevent that from happening. There's debate as to whether they're entitled or not. As far as I'm concerned, if they're a voter in town, I will find a way for them to participate, whether it's the way they want to do it or not, but I will find a way because I think they're entitled. And that's my job.
So do you have some suggestions or recommendations for us at this point relative to the deliberative session?
I sent you a spreadsheet. I think you all got it.
Spreadsheet, this one?
Yes. And if you look at the...
Only page one was printed.
Yep, that's all right. That's all you need.
Okay.
I'm not sure you've got the same one I do, but anyway. Town deliberative session, top line.
Right.
Excuse me.
Last year, we had fifty-three. The year before, we had eighty-four. The year before that, we had fifty-one. It was almost ten years ago before we hit the hundred-person mark.
Right.
Some of these years, there have been more controversial things on there than there have been other years. I'm not anticipating seeing anything of significance on this ballot nor on the school district ballot that would cause people to say, I've got to get there because I have to fix this. So I'm not expecting a lot of people there. I would anticipate, I think we can do it in the APR. Couple of things. I think if we set it up with the chairs, I would do single chairs. I will do pairs of chairs. So if husband and wife come in, they can sit together. Space six feet apart and they'll be fine. How I do unmasked, I haven't decided yet. We may put them across the hall in one of those classrooms with a monitor. We'll figure that out. Like I said, I've thought about all three places and just sort of haven't come to a decision until you guys decide. But I think we can do it in the APR, which is convenient because that's where everybody's used to going.
Yeah, that would be my preference.
What I would do is I would change the stage. I would put two long tables on the stage. I would put all of you on the stage at two different tables so that you can space out six feet apart. I want you to be able to speak without a mask and so I think I can do that. I will move Paul and Diane and Eileen to a table on the floor just in front of the stage. So they're convenient, right there. And again, spaced apart. We will use Plexigas screens for the check-in people. No contact. You show your license right against the screen, just like you do when you're voting. I've got enough moderators to mingle around and make sure that things right. That's the only real change and setup that I would do is separating you guys just to keep you apart.
Keep us safe. We appreciate that. Any other, any questions on that or thoughts? I think that works for us. Presumably, you indicated there might be different situations with the school district. That's not our problem, but.
I've already told, I've told both the school district and the town that I want them both to do the same thing. I want them to do it back-to-back, Thursday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday, so that we only have to do setup once and everybody in town knows how it works and we don't have to go through a re-education process. I believe the school district is agreeable to that as well.
Will they fit in the APR? I don't know what their numbers were. I thought they were slightly higher than ours.
No, they're doing about the same.
Oh, okay.
And like I said, they don't have anything on their ballot either. As we get closer, if something happens that they've got something on, then maybe we'll rethink it and go to the Smith Gym where we have a little more room. But right now, I'm thinking we can do this in the APR.
And we're tentatively scheduled for two separate weeks right now, no?
No, March ninth is the school and March tenth is us.
And eleventh and twelfth are the backup days.
Backup, hmm. Okay, my mistake.
Same week. Back-to-back.
Okay.
Make it easy.
All right. That's easier than I thought it was going to be.
That's my job. Make it easy.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other thoughts or questions or comments? That's the deliberative session.
Yep.
In March.
Yep.
And then in April, we will do an election very similar to what we just did at the presidential.
Been doing for the past three. All three places. And now, if we have a primary, which is possible.
Yep.
I'm going to suggest we do it in one location. There's going to be very few people coming. I can't see the cost and effort and expense to set up three locations, tie them up all day long. I'm going to suggest you go to the APR. Maybe you limit the hours. That's something we can talk about when we determine if there's going to be. But I'm going to suggest we go to just one location for that primary. Put signs up, electronic billboards. You can put electronic signs and the other two places saying, don't vote here. Go to the middle school, go to the upper elementary. And like I said, you're not going to have that many people, so.
No, I fully understand that.
I can't justify the cost and manpower effort. I'm not expecting, but.
But just in case, we'll figure it out.
If it is, that's what I'm going to suggest you do.
Okay. And we don't have any limitation, I mean, we have some limitations, but we'll know plenty of time in advance to be able to make that kind of a decision and announce it.
You will know by Friday at six o'clock.
Whether there is one or not, yeah. Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? Going three times now.
Going, going, going.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay. We'll be talking again before the next session, I'm sure. What was the last you said?
Not my first rodeo.
Oh, no. Nor ours, but we certainly appreciate having you there helping us out. Okay. Which brings us to a public hearing. We don't have one. Legislative updates from state reps. I did receive a letter from Maureen and an input from Representative Healy as well. Basically, I read most of this announcement at our budget meeting last week, but because this is a council meeting versus a budget meeting, I'm going to go ahead and read this from Maureen Mooney with adjustments made by Representative Healy. At the January sixth historic drive-in House session, Deputy Speaker Sherman Packard, Republican from London area, was elected Speaker of the New Hampshire House of Representatives. On January seventh, Governor Christopher Sununu was sworn in for his third term. The following House committee appointments were made, and there's a slight adjustment. Representative Mooney to the Election Law Committee, Representative Blasey... Representative Blasey to the Public Works Committee. It was Healy before they've swapped. Representative Nader to the Science, Energy, Technology Committee. Representative Tosh to the Judiciary Committee. And Representatives Mayville, Rung, and Healy to the Resources, Recreation Development Committee. The newly sworn in Executive Council met on January 7th and took up the Merrimack Town Council's letter requesting a special election for state representative. The details have been forwarded to Town Hall, and we just finished discussing them here as well. And then finally, the House committees are holding Zoom orientations this week, and will start hearing bills as soon as, as early as next week, respectfully submitted by Representatives Maureen Mooney and Bob Healy. Unless, are there any other state reps in attendance? Seeing none. Town managers report.
Final stamped bid documents for the wastewater Phase 2 project were submitted to New Hampshire Department of...
Oh, you got, thanks.
Sorry.
I couldn't hear you.
I'll do it again. Final stamped bid documents for the wastewater Phase 2 project were submitted to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services today for their final review. The project is scheduled to advertise for bid on January 21st, with the opening of bids scheduled for February 23rd. Construction on the $22.6 million project will begin this summer. Favorable temperatures allowed the Watson Park skating rink to officially open on Monday, January 11th. Unfortunately, the weather forecast for Saturday may cause the rink to be closed temporarily until colder weather allows. When open, when open, the rink is lit until 9:00 PM each night. Status updates on the rink, rink can be found on Parks and Recreation website and their Facebook page. Merrimack TV continues live high school sports coverage this week with the girls varsity basketball on Friday night at 6:00 PM and wrestling on Saturday morning at 10:00 AM. Watch live on Merrimack TV, Channel 21, our website, and on Roku, Apple TV services. Details, including more sports coverage announcements, will be available on Merrimack TV's website and on social media. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any, does anybody have any questions for Eileen? Or me? Seeing none. We'll move on to our first order of business. We have no consent agenda because we didn't put this on the consent agenda. So under Old Business Number One, Recommended Zoning Ordinance Amendments, our final reading, it was submitted by Community Development Director Tim Thompson. Town Council to consider recommended amendments to the zoning ordinance Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 11, and 17, developed by staff and the planning board to address repeated ordinance administration and/or enforcement tasks. Definitions, ordinance references, home occupations, dimensional requirement clarifications, travel trailers, references, and modifications to ensure compliance with the State Building Code, signs, et cetera. First one to RSA 675:2 and Charter Article 5. So we had a presentation, gosh, what, two months ago? And then a public hearing a month ago on this? And now we're at our final third reading to adopt this. I haven't heard of anybody having any change requests, but if there's anybody who wants to make any comments or we can take a motion to accept it.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion was made by Bill and seconded by Peter.
I saw him moving like this. Go for it, Pete.
Any, any comments or thoughts?
I just want to thank the Community Development Director, Tim Thompson, and his team for their hard work, the planning board, Bob Best, Alistair Milnes, Paul McLaughlin, Neil Anketell, Nelson Disco, and I'm probably forgetting, Lynn Christensen. Did I get them all? And, and then me. For the work that was put into this. And a lot of hard work, a lot of thought, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of due diligence, so. Really appreciate the work, and I want to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It is somewhat amazing how much technical detail goes into these and then has to be updated when a state law changes or something changes a little bit, and you end up renumbering and reformatting and keeping all this stuff up to date. So it does become a tremendous task. And so thank you very much, Tim, and, and your staff, and everybody that got involved to, to get this updated. So where building codes are correct, and, and we have some additional information on what the ADUs and, and things like that, as well as cell towers and, and stuff. So if there's no other comments, we'll call for a vote on accepting the ordinance change. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. Thank you very much. Which brings us to new business. Number one, we have an Eagle Scout project presentation submitted by Life Scout Joy Morris. The Town Council will be presented with Life Scout Joy Morris's proposed Eagle Scout project to construct a Gaga pit near the waterfront area at Wasserman Park. Joy?
I did too.
Oh, come on. There is another one up at the upper field by the function hall.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That we approved already. Guys don't remember. On the microphone? Yeah, just push it to see if the light, the green has to light up. Where it says push.
Okay, now do it again because it was already on.
There you go. Thanks.
Yes, if you'd like.
You can, you can take that off if you'd like. It'd be a little bit easier to understand. It helps some of us. Anyway, welcome, Joy.
Thank you. All right.
How about that, huh?
Yeah, fancy. All right. All right, so. Hello, my name is Joy Morris. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. This is a proposal asking for your approval to build a second Gaga ball pit at Wasserman Park, this one at the waterfront. Let me see how this works. All right. Before I get into my proposal, here are a few things about me. I'm 17 years old, and I'm one of the first five members of Girls Troop 15. I was the troop's first senior patrol leader for the whole first year, and I achieved Life Scout rank on October 13th of last year. I'm now attempting to achieve Eagle Scout rank, and the most prominent requirement of achieving Eagle Scout rank is to organize and complete a service project that will benefit the community for many years. On the screen are some pictures of my troop and I doing fun things. But what is my project? My project is to build a Gaga ball pit at Wasserman Park waterfront. And what is Gaga ball? Gaga ball is a dodgeball-like sport played in a walled pit where the ball remains on the ground for much of the game, and to get someone out, you need to, to hit them below the knees with the ball. Before I can build the pit, though, the site is at a bit of a slant, so I'll need to have a retaining wall and fill it with sand to make a level surface because to play Gaga ball, you need an even playing field area. This is a rough sketch of it. Can my, does my mouth show? Oh, yes. All right. This is a rough sketch of it. You can see the general shape of the wall blocks. One's buried halfway to keep it secure. Here's our incline. Sand will be filled in, and the Gaga ball pit will be on top. This is a rough sketch of my design for the Gaga ball pit. You can see that there's a cutout entrance area. The dimension's 33 feet tall and 25-foot diameter all around. Inches, I'm sorry.
Just, just busting.
Oopsie. Yes, definitely not 33 feet. That would be very impressive.
Thank you, that would be very impressive.
Not quite that cool. So each segment is made of two-by-10-by-12 boards, and there are plastic covers on each to round out the corners. And there are two-by-four boards on each segment to keep the two-by-10-by-12 boards from warping. To the left is a Google Maps aerial view of the site, and I slapped an octagon onto the picture to show where it should be. And to the right is a ground-level view of the site with placeholders for the longest ends. It'll, you know, it's kind of marking the octagon. I added arrows to mark it. Where am I? Ah, so what will the pit be made of and how much will it cost? It'll be $1,843.92 for the wooden boards. What?
That's kind of accurate, don't you think?
Well, I've priced all the materials ahead of time. So that's what everything added up to.
All right. I, I like the precision, sorry.
I was told it was very good to be exact. So that's for the wooden boards, the eight metal corner brackets. Did you say something?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. The eight plastic covers, the surface material, which is the sand, the nuts, bolts, and washers.
And the retaining wall and stuff included?
The retaining wall blocks have already been donated. They're free.
Oh?
Yeah.
Awesome.
So how will I raise the money? I'll have one or more storefront comic book sales, selling comics that I drew myself. As shown on the screen, there's a black and white and a colored sample.
Wow, that's awesome.
Thank you. So for sales below $5, there'll be two black and white comics. The one on the left is a sample of one of the black and white ones. And for sales above $5, I'll have a full comic book with about ha- eight half-pages or so in color, like the one on the right. And I'll also have a GoFundMe to sell them virtually.
Is that manga?
It is.
Very cool. Very cool, good for you.
Thank you. I think I missed. Yay. All right, so what is my timeline? I have a few milestones, as shown on the screen. I need to get full approval of my project, which is part of what I'm doing right now, hopefully by the end of late January. I should have my fundraising efforts in February. I should have construction in late March, or once the ground is thawed enough to build, but not too muddy. So somewhere in there. And at the end of March or early April of this year, I should have full project completion, and all remaining funds and materials will be turned into the Parks and Rec Department. The weather may delay the progress some because, again, early spring or late spring, yeah, early spring, mud or ice, you never know. I need solid ground. But the, the goal is to have it installed by then. So now you know all the following. You know who I am, what I want to do, how I want to do it, how much it will cost, how I will obtain the money, the steps I need to take, and when I want to do the project. And now I'm asking for your approval. Any questions?
So you needed to have this completed before your 18th birthday, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And this fits in your timeline, I trust?
Yeah, my birthday is in August.
All right. That doesn't give you a lot of leeway because you have a few things to finish up probably after this? Or have you got everything already all set?
Couple of merit badges and stuff, but, you know.
Piece of cake. I got about five or six merit badges when I was in scouts, so. You're way ahead of me. But I had too much fun camping. Does anybody have any questions? Barbara?
I'm going to think that you've probably already done this, but have you spoken with our Parks and Rec Director, Matt Gisberitz? About this? Because they are going to be doing work on refinishing that whole beach area. And I'm not sure what the timeline is for you and him. So as long as you've been checking in with him on where it's going and what it's doing, and I noticed you had it all marked off, that should work. But I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we've been in contact, and I think he's seen my proposal before.
Okay.
Gosh, I hope so. You've been to the Parks and Rec Department and things like that, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Dawn's here, and that's her project, the perch beach. Are we all set in terms of?
Yeah.
Timing?
Locations and timing.
Yeah, because we'd hate for you to go through all of this, and then all of a sudden, they rip it out to fix the beach.
Some big tractor rolls over it or something, you know, it'd be rude.
Yeah.
I think I would have been told, I hope.
I hope, yeah. We have the lady whose project it is. She happens to be in the back of the room, and she's saying, you're cool.
Awesome. Nancy?
Okay, a couple of comments. In reading your paperwork you submitted, you talked about really feeling uncomfortable and needing to learn to be leader, to quote you. I have to work rather than being a leader of the project in this event because you, you're not. Well, that's what I think the whole project is about, in my opinion. And maybe the, your mentors will tell you that. That in order, you have to start somewhere. And although it's uncomfortable, that's how you get the experience in leading. And I also want to make a point is you're very charismatic, and you did a really nice job. And part of that was, one, you were very comfortable with the information, so it came across very easily. So you probably, did you practice?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Which showed, so that gives, I'm just trying to help you understand how well you did. And whatever you did to prepare for that, those are the kind of things you want to be able to do in the future. So you did very well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments? So thank you very much. I know I interrupted you and asked questions, but that, part of that was just to see how you were prepared and, and ready and willing to react, and that's...
I was also prepared for that.
That was good, thank you. Finley?
Yes, thank you, Joy. It's a great project. I've never used one of those, but I'm familiar with it because of the first one that was done. But yours is on a slope, and so you've spoken to the retaining wall. I, I don't know from an engineering standpoint what's necessary, how deep you have to go, but with the weight of sand behind a wall, after a certain point, you have to go deeper and such. And I don't, I don't know what it is, but I just, you know, so that that doesn't, with time, push away, and all of a sudden, the whole pit starts to slope. Just putting it out there for somebody to think about during the project. So it's probably with just a half-buried block, it might be okay, I'm not sure. So I'm just putting it out there for thought.
I will have that noted.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other comments? So she's requesting permission to build a second Gaga ball pit in Wasserman Park as presented. Do we have a motion to accept that or to allow, grant that?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made by Bill Boyd and seconded by Lon Woods to grant permission to Joy Morris to go forward with her Eagle Scout project, constructing a Gaga pit near the waterfront area at Wasserman Park. If there's no further comments?
Just a quick one, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Thank you. I just, and I say this with a tremendous amount of respect and sincerity. I've been here for 10 years. We've had a lot of Eagle Scout projects. I think this is, in my knowledge, I think this is the first young woman presenting an Eagle Scout project to this council. And I think you ought to be commended for, for your achievements and, and what you've accomplished so far and what you're seeking to accomplish. I think it's, I think it's amazing. You're, you are certainly a role model to everybody in this community for what you're doing. So I want to thank you for that. But secondly, and everybody knows I like to talk about this, but, you know, one of the things that these Eagle Scout projects is, it's about legacy. It's about contributing to the quality of life. And dare I be cliche and talk about the crown jewels of Merrimack and Wasserman Park being one of those? And you're just making that, you're making that jewel brighter by what you're, by what you're proposing to build. So I want to thank you and your volunteers for what you're setting out to do. I think it's tremendous, so thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. So with that, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? And if that's it, 7-0. If you need anything from us, let us know, signature-wise or whatever. And either I or Eileen or whoever is needed will be happy to help you out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy.
I appreciate you coming. Yeah, have fun with that.
Is that your project leader behind you? Thank you for what you're doing, sir. Really appreciate it. There you go, I like that. Keeping you busy, right?
That's right.
Good.
So next, we have a couple of committee appointments. Merrimack Conservation Commission has an opening in the full-time, and we're looking to promote Eric Starr from an alternate position to a full-time position at the Conservation Commission.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Bill and seconded by Peter. All those, any comments or thoughts?
Want to thank Eric for, for the work that he's done in stepping up to a full-time position. As everybody knows, the ConCon, as I'm sure Counselor Alvin can attest to, continue to do great work with their conservation properties. And Eric's been a valuable contributor. And Eric's been a valuable contributor, I'm sure Councilor Alva can attest to that, and I'm looking forward to him being a full-time member.
Yeah, Eric's been an alternate now for over a year. He's definitely a contributor. He'll make the Conservation Committee, which is already strong, he'll make it even stronger, so I highly recommend him as well.
Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll vote on promoting Eric from an alternate to a full-time member of the Conservation Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. I'm not sure what I need to sign on here, but we'll get it. Our next order of business is an opening on the zoning board of adjustment. And Ben Niles has been on the board as an alternate, and would like to move into a full-time position on the zoning board. So we're bringing that proposal forward.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Moved by Bill Boyd, seconded by Barbara. She's closer, her voice got here faster. To promote Ben to a full-time position on the zoning board of adjustment. Any comments?
I just want to thank Ben for stepping up, kind of, now that he was retired when he applied to be an alternate, he interviewed well with us, and I thought provided a different, more thoughtful approach in deliberations, and I'm anticipating that he'll continue that particular thought process as a member of the ZPA. He's a valued member, and I want to thank him for his continued service.
Awesome. If there's no other comments, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero as well. So Ben and Eric are gonna have to go by, do they need to get sworn in to move to a full-time position?
Yes.
Yeah, so they'll have to stop at the town clerk's office when it's open? Or make an appointment with Diane to go in? Huh?
Monday.
Monday. To go into the town clerk's office to sign these documents? I guess everybody has to sign these. If you give me just a minute. Okay. We're gonna pass around the appointment papers for signature, but I think we can go ahead on with our agenda. So next up is a dog leash discussion, submitted by resident Deborah Heyman? Is Deborah Heyman here? Oh.
Or Devora?
Devora, sorry. Town resident Devora Heyman would like to propose and discuss requiring owners to lease their dogs on town-owned trails and conservation areas. You may, and it makes it easier for us to understand, so we appreciate it.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak about this. It's my first time in politics.
Well, that's fine, just need to.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
So I'm gonna say a little bit about myself. My name is Devora Heyman, and I moved here in 2014 when I got a job offer for Intel. Intel used to be here, and then they moved to Hartson. So that's how I got ended up in this town, I never heard of this town. So in the beginning, I used to rent, and then I loved this town so much that I decided to stay.
Just move the mic a little closer to you, would help us to hear it better.
Closer, like this?
Yeah, that's better, thank you.
So I decided to stay, because I fell in love with this town, with people, nature, it was perfect. Before that, I used to live in Arizona for 18 years, so a big change.
I know the change.
Yeah. So even if Intel moved, I still decided to stay and not to move to Hartson or Massachusetts, because I enjoy living here, I'm really grateful. So I have some notes here, so help me. So today, we're just talking about the problem, right?
Right.
We're not deciding anything.
We're not making any decisions at this point.
So here's what my take and my observation is. Merrimack is growing. For the past four, five years, the population is increasing, and it will continue increasing, because people are living in big cities, they can walk remotely, and families move here. So population is increasing. I live on Bibilane, right by the Great Woods. The Great Woods are behind me. So I moved there because I wanted to enjoy the trail. So I hike there a lot. Nice trails, beautiful forest. So this is what, I walk with my dog, I have three dogs right now. But at the time, I used to have one dog, then I got another one. So I leash my dogs, because they're hounds, they can be, they're hunting dogs, so I can't just let them loose. So I always keep them on leash, long leash, extended leash, whatever, but they on leash. However, when I'm on trail, many times, I would see a couple of dogs with no owner inside, because it's a forest, you know, it's very, and I'm dealing with three dogs, my dog and two other dogs, until the owner comes out. Also, I see bikers with dogs behind them. There's no, so, and I can give you a lot of examples of that. In reality, they don't see their dogs, don't control them. Oftentimes, yes, they see me with the leash dogs, some people do leash their dogs, so that is good. But there were a lot of situations where it was very, very uncomfortable. At some point, I even stopped walking on weekends, because it's just too many people with dogs. So I think that it's a public safety issue, because people need to feel safe walking on trails and not to worry about strange dogs. Not everyone loves dogs. Some people enjoy dogs, but they're not afraid. Some people are more afraid of dogs than bears, so it's really not, so. And I also had a discussion on Merrimack Forum on Facebook. I had a discussion about it, my thread was deleted, because people started to get aggressive about that issue. But there were a lot of other residents who shared that they actually don't like to go to Great Woods because of that issue. Because one lady said she was walking with her child, and two dogs came to her, and the owner didn't even apologize, you know, she picked up her child to protect. There were other people who shared this. I actually have a backup, I don't know, I sent it to some Rebecca?
Rebecca Thompson, she's our secretary.
I actually backed up this whole thread, and I emailed the discussion, yeah. And I emailed it where you can see some snippets of that. So it's a real issue. So I think that maybe the law can be modified, and it feels more, even Great Woods feels more like city park than a forest, you know. So I think we should change it and make it more safer for everyone. And in Merrimack, they should require the dogs to be leashed. So that's what I wanted to say. So I hope you can consider that.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Stay with us, please, so we can have a discussion.
You have any questions?
Anybody have any thoughts or questions they want to share at this point? Nancy?
You can stay there. Are you able to hear me, Deborah?
It's better if you remove your mask for a second.
Well, this is me.
It's Nancy talking.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, it's good, yeah, I can see your face, yeah.
Okay. And examining this, one of the things that I've noted, we received quite a few emails from people who were against having to leash their dogs.
Against, okay.
Against. And I also wanted to know if there was a history of any reports of troubles of unleashed dogs. Paul McCally had spoken, and actually not spoken, had looked at records to see if there's been any reports of complaints about unleashed dogs. And since 2018, is that the right date? There were two reports, okay? So when we're talking.
You're talking about the police reports?
Police reports of.
Police reports, yeah.
Right, now, we do have an animal control officer. So whether it be the police officer or the animal control officer who's in the police department. But in terms of complaints, okay, what they did with it.
Yeah, I never reported, I mean, why would I call police, and how I'm gonna report it, I mean.
Well, I think part of the difficulty I have, and I only speak for myself, is that if there was, if you don't like it, that's one thing. If it created a problem because it was dangerous, or there were incidences where it created a problem, which is what I was looking at.
When the person was actually attacked and hurt by the dog, it happened, okay.
Right. Or, you know, they're not responding to the owner calling them. But if there was some difficulty, then I perhaps could talk about, well, how can we modify the ordinance? But there doesn't seem to be a problem. I can understand with people not liking them and feeling uncomfortable about it. But in order to, in my opinion, change something, there has to be a reason to it. There has to be some justification. So I'm just being honest with you.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right, all right, thank you.
Hold on, no, no, there's more. I'm only one person.
Peter?
Devora, you know, I'm looking at RSA 46630, a dog control law, and under paragraph two, it pretty much spells out about owners being within sight and in control of a dog. So I guess what I look at is, certainly, people are allowed to walk their dogs, but remain in sight and control. I guess if this dog is disobedient, or uncontrollable, or aggressive, that's another issue where you could make a complaint, and it could be looked at. I think, too, that if we were to create this ordinance, how would we enforce it? We're not certainly gonna put the police into the conservation areas, they have too many other things to do. So I think if they were a serious enough complaint and you were concerned, you could take your concerns to the police department and ask them to look into that matter, or the animal control officer, and say, "I'm out walking, and this dog cornered me," or "attacked my dog." I think you're certainly within your rights to do that, and they may be, if that were the case, they might be in violation of the law. So I don't see a need to create that ordinance at this time. And that's just one man's opinion.
Okay.
Bill?
All right, thank you.
No, 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 no. You brought the discussion up, so we want to make sure we have an opportunity to get the opinions out from different people, so.
I appreciate you including this in your package about dog walkers on leash at Manchester Water Works. My wife and I, we run sled dogs. We train our dogs over at the Manchester Water Works at Tower Hill and at Depot Road. And I can say with a fair degree of certainty, in the 16 years that I've been training my dogs over there, with that sign being there, I've never once seen a dog on a leash while I've been training my dogs over there. Yeah, and it goes directly to what Councilor Alva was saying regarding enforceability.
When I went there, and because they had these signs, it gave me, like, if I saw the dogs lose, I told them, "Look, there's a sign, you need to leash your dog." It gives me a right to require.
When you're over at that location, I don't blame you, absolutely, absolutely.
Right, that was a different, but when I was there, they were leashed. I go there a lot, that's why I took a picture, because I like, it's a circle, it's wide, and you can see who's coming.
Exactly, but I can also tell you that they don't, I've never seen it enforced over there in my years over there.
Dogs are leashed, and there was one guy who had a dog over leash, because he thought there was no one there, and I asked him to leash, because there's a sign. I don't know what, whatever, yeah, I think it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, so that was all included in here? Okay. So we have received like 10 or 11 different letters from people that didn't want to come to this meeting for whatever reason, and maybe there are other people in the public that want to have something to say. But there's a lot of people that believe dogs need to be able to run. The law requires that the dogs be under the control, not necessarily in the sight of the owners, but under control, so that they don't create a nuisance of themselves. And as Peter suggested, I think if you find that they are creating a nuisance, then you need to report it, just so that we're aware and know that there's a problem.
I think it.
Okay, anybody else have anything they wanted to say? Do you want to go ahead and make a comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Green light is still on?
Yep.
My name is Andrew Dwayne, a town resident for about 20 years now, also a member of the Wildcat Falls Subcommittee of the Conservation Commission. My dog and I, or several different dogs, have been hiking Wildcat Falls for about 20 years now and several of the other conservation properties in town. There are very, very occasional incidents where a dog is not directly under control. Usually, they are, sometimes it's, "Oh, come back," and they will. My dog is always under control, but only on a leash within the parking area and sort of the common entrance area. When I see other people coming, especially other people with dogs, I will usually take my dog and either put her on a leash or hold her collar, just to be safe. By far, the biggest problem with dogs that we all struggle with in all of the conservation areas is the owners not picking up after them.
I was gonna say, I bet I know what he's gonna say.
Which we struggled with at Wildcat Falls now for five years, since I've been on the committee. I also, as a technical question about any of these laws, do they apply to the non, I'm not sure how you would call them, there are non-public conservation areas within the town that are not Wildcat Falls, Wasserman Park, Horse Hill. For example, 18 Woodward Road is about a 20-acre parcel the town owns, the town Conservation Commission owns. Do those same rules apply there?
I'm sure they do.
Okay. I ask because I actually abut 18 Woodward Road, and I use that all the time. We have a series of trails that homeowners in the area maintain, and I have my dog out there all the time. And she occasionally strays on the other side of the boundary, so I just have always wondered if the same rules apply there.
Yeah, I'm sure that, I'm sure they do at this point.
But in general, I've never seen a problem more than the occasional over-enthusiastic dog. Maybe once in my years of hiking. Most owners are quite good with their dogs and quite apologetic when something like that happens.
Well, I think, and the law requires that the owners be responsible, and that's all we can really ask for.
Under control, I believe, is the, that's what is used in the law. And a leash would count as control, but proper voice control counts also.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Eileen? We need you to, I'm sorry, sir, could you give us your name and address again, just for the.
My name is Andrew Dwayne, I live at 10 Dwyer Street.
Okay, thank you. Eileen?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Heyman for coming in, and don't be discouraged. The council listens to you, and they have heard you. If you have any issues, I don't want people to think that they can't come in and talk to the council, and hopefully, they've explained to you why they feel that it's not appropriate. But please feel free to come in and talk to them whenever you feel that you need something. Or if you feel threatened by a dog or something like that, you should definitely call the police department and the animal control officer, because we want you to feel comfortable and safe in our conservation areas, as you say, some of the most beautiful around, and we want them to be enjoyed by everyone, and to be, for people to be respectful of others. So thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you, and I echo what Eileen said.
Just a quick question. Obviously, I'm not suggesting that we read the letters, the emails that we received, but should we attach it as an addendum to the minutes of this discussion?
I gave them to Becky, so that she has them all, and we'll do that.
Should they be attached to the minutes?
Yeah, I think they should.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, Nancy's prerogative, I ask that it be added to the record, so I apologize.
Okay. So we'll just include them. Becky's got copies of the ones that I received, but they were all sent to the entire council, so everybody receive those. Sure. You can either stand there or sit down here, it's either. You can either stand there or sit down here, it's either way.
Is there any committees that take care of Greater Woods or Wildcat Falls? People that actually maintain those pieces of land?
Definitely are. This gentleman's on the Wildcat Falls Committee. The Conservation Commission is responsible for them.
The Conservation, yeah, okay. My biggest thing is that for fourteen years plus on HHNP Subcommittee, we've only had two really, really instances of dealing with one dog and a bike and a horse. And that was the only two that we had, and it was taken care of by the committee. Spoke to them, we did not involve the police department. And I'm afraid that if this goes through, it's gonna affect all the properties in Merrimack.
It would, but there's nothing, there's nothing being presented at this point, this was just a discussion.
Horse Hill, I mean, is an outstanding piece of property.
It is.
And it's well-used, the dogs are loose, a lot of them, yes, they have harnesses. I go there two or three times a day, talk to people, play with the dogs, my dog plays with them. And right now, so far, we've had no instances whatsoever. And the signs are in the kiosks, about what you just said, if you cannot handle your dog, you have to leash him. And that was one of the problems we had when we first started. I spoke to the lady, and she came back, and I spoke to her again, I said, "Listen, if you do, I'm gonna have to call the police department," and she never came back. But there was a, and the one with the bike, it was the bike's mistake, we had a long talk with him, everything was corrected. As far as problems, there are no problems whatsoever.
Okay, great. Did you identify yourself and your address?
Roland Roburge, 180 Amherst Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire.
Great, thank you. All right. Barbara?
Just a comment. I think, for those who are watching, I think this has been a good discussion, because I think dog owners sometimes forget that they may have dogs that can be a little intimidating to those people who do, who are afraid of dogs, and there are many people who are. You know, I have two dogs, and if you heard them coming and you didn't see them, you would swear that the hounds of Hades are after you. And then they, they're two little Yorkies, but, but that's the way they are. So we always have our dogs on lease just for that reason, because they can get very energized. But anyways, but I think for, you know, dog owners who are out on the trails, just be aware that there may be people out there as well who are afraid of dogs, and maybe just keep an extra eye on your dog if he is tending to run out away from you, so that others won't be, you know, afraid. Because we want that to be a good experience for everyone on our trails and in our parks. So just, you know, a thought as you go forward, because I know when a Great Dane comes at me, I get a little nervous every so often, because they're taller than I am.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Barbara, just to go along on your point, because I like what you said. On Horse Hill, we've got maybe five or six that are exactly what you're saying, and they are leashed. And when you come upon them with your dog, they will say, "My dog's a little bit agitated, or he's a little bit anxious," and, thank you very much, we step aside, and no problems. No, they've all been really, really decent, and most of them are all rescues.
Well, and most of the times, that's what we see, but apparently, there are some people in town that have been concerned or whatnot. So I guess Barbara's comment is very well-taken. The people need to be put on notice, that your dogs have to be under your control, and they have to be socially acceptable. They can't get in fights with other dogs on the trails, they can't bite or nip or whatever anybody else. They need to be behaving themselves as much as we as individual people need to be behaving ourselves on those trails, because they're public trails, they're not private trails. So just take note, everybody, to be responsible. Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Okay. That brings us to number five on our agenda, which is the Capital Improvement Plan. What's the agenda say? It's submitted by the Town Manager, Eileen Cabanel, and Finance Director, Paul T. McCallie. Town Council will be presented with the details of the 2022 to 2028 CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Detail away, sir. Ma'am, Eileen?
I just, I just wanted to say, for those people that are watching, I am gonna be retiring in a few months, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands that I'm not just sitting here and observing and not doing anything. Paul is in the process of practicing for the, I guess, can I say? Can I say? For, he's auditioning for the role. That's good. So I am sitting here as his wingman and allowing him to do his presentations, which he's doing an excellent job. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you, Eileen.
Well, good evening.
Feel free to correct him as necessary.
I handed out the presentation, I know that it seems like there's a lot of pages here. We'll go through a lot of this going forward. There aren't a lot of extremely new projects on the major side, or even on the minor side of the House.
Oh, really?
You've all seen a lot of them. I'll touch base on some of the ones that are within the next couple of years, planning. But just to know that there are a lot of projects going on in town, and a lot of planning that goes on with a lot of these construction projects. I have Dawn, the Deputy Director of Public Works. Dawn Tlamala in the back, she's gonna answer all my questions about construction, or any questions you have that I can't answer. So with that, I just want to give the overview, is that along with the Charter Article 8.9, the Planning Board was directed in 1984 to prepare and maintain a six-year capital improvement plan. What happens is that anything over a hundred thousand dollars in construction-related for improvements of land-building infrastructure, it goes to the Planning Board for their review. So basically, anything on the major projects goes to the Planning Board for their review. The Planning Board has made a decision that if a dump truck costs a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, it costs a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, they want to see the infrastructure, the buildings, the, and the land improvements. For equipment, they've left that alone, and you'll see that in the minor program when you look at the minor sheets, that there might be some things that are over a hundred thousand dollars, and that's because of the way the Planning Board has worked over the years. So, first things is the funding of these projects. We've talked about this a lot during the budget presentations, and it's, it's not funny, but it's to the point where we've already talked about a lot of these capital reserve funds with our budget hearings and things of that sort. Normally, we come in December timeframe to the council with the capital improvement plan. I hate to use COVID as an excuse, but because of COVID and because of some of the delays, I was able to get on the agenda for the Planning Board in late December, and I didn't have enough time to turn that around and then get to the Town Council within two days to present this as well to the Town Council. That's why I'm here in the first meeting in January to present to the council. So with all these projects and everything, we talk about our capital reserve funds and our funding. And what this slide shows is the historic funding from 2016 moving forward to 2020, '21. And as you can see, we started at 1.6 million, we increased to 1.6, 1,687. We dipped a little bit, and I'm just going through the general fund, we dipped a little bit to 1.1,630,000. Constant next year, we jumped to 1,795. In 2021, we're looking at...
What number are you reading?
Right here at the bottom.
You can't read that?
Where? I'm trying to get my clip, right there, right here, these numbers right there. It says capital reserve funds, I can't get the mouse up on the screen, but I can, right here?
Right here, right here.
It's not coming up.
Just, where did you see a 1.4 million? I don't see that anywhere.
See this line?
Yeah.
These are the lines he's going through, so right, see it says...
Total Property Tax Financing?
Capital Reserve Fund Transfers, right, Paul?
Yes.
So that line right there, which is, there's two underlines, and the first line says 10,000, and then underneath it says 1,612 in the first column?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the line he's talking about.
Right, I'm reading the Capital Reserve Fund Transfers. And then we jumped...
Yeah, but you said it dipped to 1.4. I don't see a single 1.4.
I'm sorry, if I said that, 1,630,000. So...
Okay, sorry.
Nope, and then... Thank you, thank you for clarification. And then this current year we're in, it's at 1,970,000. And then 2022, 23, looking at a projection of 1,102 million, sorry, 2,180,000 dollars. It's been a long week, I was gonna say. It's been a long week.
You need Tom here to back you up.
Yeah, that's it. He should be doing this. 2,180,000 dollars, either that or I need new glasses. And the reason why we're, the increase, and we talked about this, is 75,000 dollars funding for fire equipment that we've discussed. And then because of our re-property valuation, a 20,000 dollar increase of that, for a total of 95,000 dollar increase for those projects, all the other capital reserve fund deposits stay the same. This is how many major projects in the general fund we have? We have twenty-eight active major projects that we are planning for in the future, from current year, 2021, all the way out to 26, '27. And what I did is I like, I broke these down, and I said, "Let me break these down to make it more manageable for this presentation," and I took the next three years, 2021, which is the current year we're in, next year, which is 21, '22, and 22, '23. And this plan was put together in September, August, September. So the first one, the public safety complex, was for about 11 million dollars, and we were looking at a 21, '22 to get a bond on the ballot and to look into building the safety complex. That is probably gonna be pushed out one year to 22, '23, as well as the renovations to the South Fire Station of 650,000 dollars. I have slides that I would like to talk about with the council. The safety complex that we talked about is that we have a Station One, which is right here in the center of town by Buckley's Cafe, was constructed in 1960 as a two-story fire station with three bays. In 1996, we added an additional three bays for a total of six bays to the fire station. The police station was relocated to the current police department here on Baboosick Lake Road in 1994. It was first constructed in 1960, and then the second, there was a second building built in 1975. So we combined the two buildings over at the current location. There has been significant growth in town since these two stations, 1996 and 1994. In both areas, the fire and police department are outgrowing their current facilities, and that is why we're looking at doing a combined safety complex for fire and police someplace in the center of town here in Merrimack. As well as, the South Fire Station was originally constructed in 1973 as a two-bay garage to house fire apparatus. The station was expanded in 1987 to include living quarters for three fire personnel. About three years, I believe it was in 2015, 2016, we renovated those living quarters to at least modernize them a little bit. But once again, this facility with the growth has seen, needs some renovations to bring it up to current codes of electricity and a better kitchen area for the gentlemen that do have to stay down there. Fire stations do run a 24-hour shift, they run, right now, there's nine personnel on shift, so there's six personnel at Station One, and then three personnel at South Fire Station or Station Two. Stormwater Improvement is the next big project, and what we've done here is we've tried to do about a 250,000 dollars worth of projects each year on the stormwater, and try to, as well, this ties into the MS4 and trying to keep us with the MS4. We have looked at some of these drainage projects, and anticipated projects for 2021 would be the Woodland Drive Phase Two Drainage Design, some drainage at South Baboosick Lake Road, Thornton Road West, Waterville Road, Sevens Bridge Road, slope stabilization, Burton Valley View, street flooding issues, and we also look at our townwide basin repairs. We go around and look at what needs to be done, and after the winter, with some of the potholes that form around the manholes and the drains, so we have to fix those.
These are things that are in the 2021 plan?
That's the 21 budget for that season, yes.
So our current budget?
For our current budget. But these are some of the projects that we do underneath this. And we haven't developed the 2022 yet, because we don't know how far along we're gonna get with the 2021 projects, but these are what we're anticipating doing. And then a new list will come together for the 22, 21, '22 construction season.
Have we done any of these, or are we anticipating doing that in the spring and early summer?
I believe, Dawn?
You didn't think I was gonna let you sit there and not say anything, did you? That's, gotta do something.
Many of these have been designed already, and they're, I can send them out for bid. The 200...
Need to get, thank you.
Sorry, I'm not that tall. So the 250,000 dollars is not gonna cover all of these. These are, so we'll take it, the most, you know, we'll go through the spring and see what the most important ones are. I've been working on the Woodland Drive for many of those roads in that area. I had the interns working on that this year. I've done the South Baboosick, I've got a design on that. So many of them are designed, and we'll take it as far as we can go with the funds that we have.
Dawn? Do you want me to move in your back, some of the council members have a long time here?
There's, yeah, there's not anybody else here, so. You're not protecting yourself from anybody.
I'm used to...
Could you just repeat some of that?
So many of those projects I have, we've, I've already designed or are in design. The smaller ones we can do under, without going to dredge and fill or anything like that. The 250,000 dollars is not gonna cover all of those. And that's usually what's in the stormwater. Last year was 200,000, this coming year, we're proposing 250. So we'll take that as far as we can go. Once we go through spring, we'll see which ones are going to need the improvement the most. But those are on the list, so if they don't get done this year, then we'll kick them to next year and keep working on it.
So we're funding a lot of different things out of the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund?
That is correct.
And you're allocating 250,000 of that, plus or minus, as necessary to these stormwater problems, is that right?
That is correct.
But you can, depending upon importance or criticality, fund a little more or a little less?
Correct.
Because it's all coming out of one pot that covers everything?
That is correct. And back, I wanna say, 11 years ago now, there was a combination of several capital reserves into the road infrastructure. We used to have a road improvement, we used to have a drainage, we used to have a sidewalk, we used to have a bike path, and there was one other that I'm figuring, oh, a bridge. And they all got included into these road infrastructures. So yes, if we need to move money around, and if one of these projects costs a little more, we do have money for that additions.
Okay, I mean, maybe it's just me, but if you're putting 250,000 in for these projects and then taking it back out the same year, why isn't it just in our budget to do that kind of work?
Because it's, that's what we're allocating, is 250,000 dollars. We put a lot more money into the capital reserve fund.
And you're allocating it to Merrimack River Boat Ramp access improvements and other things as well?
As well, yes. But these are projects that we save up for, and been saving up for. The Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund has roughly a million dollars in it right now for a lot of these projects. So what we're trying to do is this is, this is what the allocation coming out is. We put a deposit in to try to help keep that fund lucrative, so that we can do these projects by paying cash and not having to bond.
And so the amount we're putting in annually is a fixed amount?
Yes, I think it's, I got it here, hold on. In the... Yes, it's 545. It's 545, yes. It's 545, yes. Actually, $625,000 for 2122. So we put $625,000 into that capital reserve fund. And then we take these projects as we go. Because as you know, it's an 80/20 split for some of these bridges, but the bridges are four or five billion dollars. So we save up each year for those, those kinda projects. And that's why we do have some flexibility in this capital reserve fund if we need to. If one of these, to get one of these projects done, if it's 275,000, we have that extra 25,000 where we can pull to do this project in that year. Okay, thanks. Finley?
Don might answer this.
Sorry. We have a, Gale Street, there's an issue on a, a drainage issue on a private property piece that we've chatted about before. I didn't know if you knew when that might be coming up into the equation. We were waiting for the road-
We're actually trying to do that this spring.
Okay.
Yes, it's, I'm finishing up the bid package to go out to bid for the construction so we can do it this spring.
Okay.
But that's, that-
Yeah, that's a difficult one, I recognize, so.
But we'll get it-
All right.
Spring.
Thank you.
Is that, that's number seven on your list?
Correct.
Gale Road and-
Joey Road, yes.
Between Nora and Joey Drive there.
Yes, it's number seven. It is number seven. Sidewalk Improvement Plan, the Town Council made a commitment last year to spend about 200,000 for some sidewalk projects. We're doing the first one this spring. We've, we've started doing some of the surveying work and, and things of that sort. And I'm gonna say this wrong because I only know it as what I used to be called in the 70s, but it's that road that goes between Buckley's Tavern and the high school. Woodbury, thank you.
Creek Hill.
What it used to be?
Creek Hill.
Creek Hill. Creek Hill. But it's Woodbury and, and we're gonna have a sidewalk. Hopefully this summer, its construction will be done, so the sidewalk will be completed this summer. We do have some, we put 200,000 in for another sidewalk project for this year. We'll be coming in front of the council later on to ex, with the remaining four projects and to see which one the council would like to do next.
I mean, as much as we talked yesterday about the Conservation Officer and things like that, I'm wondering if that might be something we would consider pushing off in light of the half million or a million dollar increase we're looking at. Just voicing an opinion. We can think about it.
I'm glad you did.
Okay. I take that as an opinion as well. All right. Thank you.
And then the next one that is the wood, we, we kinda talked about that in the drainage is the Woodland Drive Phase Two Drainage Improvements. That would be fern, timber, heartwood, pine tree, birchwood, deerwood, and shady lane and a portion of Joppa Road. Looking at doing this project. And we discussed this in-house, and do we wanna do, you know, X amount each year over a number of years? Or do we wanna think about doing some additional, a little bit of design and then maybe going out for bond in 2324? Right now, I am not a big fan of a lot of debt or bonding, but the rates are unbelievable. I mean, it's almost like it's free money. I think a five-year is like .34. Just, the bonds just got sold this week, and the rates came out, I think a five-year was like .34% for five years of money. It's, it's, we don't get that in the bank, saving up for it. So, you know, that's something that we were looking at. And, and the other thing is, is if we do this as one big project and a bond, we're not disturbing that neighborhood four or five years in a row. So it would be done, not saying construction will all get done in one year, but it isn't gonna be several years where it's, it's choppy.
Bill?
Is there an opportunity as it relates, and maybe Don's better equipped to talk about it, looking at the, the map up here, part of where the drainage improvements is also where we've talked about putting that roundabout at the, at the Baboosook-Turkey Hill Road Split? Would that be the same time that the drainage would be being proposed, where we're putting in the roundabout?
No. No, the drainage from this area comes down in a-
Can you get a little closer to the mic? I can't hear you back there.
The, the drainage from this area comes down to Baboosook Lake, but it is east of where the roundabout would be.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So how does it catch Joppa Road if it's east of all that? What part of Joppa Road, up further north, or?
Joppa Road, yes, it's up further. It, it's not the southern part.
Not down by the lake road?
No.
The lake road? Okay. Peter, you had a question?
Just a point of order. It's a rotary.
So, the next- I questioned the point of order's around about, I've around Alastair too much.
You're a born and bred New Englander.
I know it's a rotary. I, I, thank you, Officer Albert, I appreciate it. So the Town Council has made a commitment to paving. And, and that has shown, in 2020, the, we paved a bunch of 475, we have 475 roads. In 2020, we paved Bedford Road from Wire Road to Davis Road, and basically that was a total reconstruction of the road. We tore it all the way down to the base. We injected the base with, for a layman's term, glue. And then we repaved the base coat and then we put the top coat on it. And that's supposed to stabilize the road. And these are, these are supposed to actually let these roads more useful years of life. We've done this on Amorous Road and we've done this on Pearson Road. So this is something that we've done on two or three roads within town. And we're, we're looking at this process on not only major thoroughfares, but inside some of these developments as well. So this is something that we're looking at. We, we paved Lois Lane, Backriver Road, Derry Street from Joppa to Burt, Birch Street, Dover Street, French Court, Tinker Road, so we, and we've also paved a couple of parking lots this paving season. The list is not completed for the 21 paving season yet. That bid will be going out, we're, because we're trying to get some favorable rates with the oil prices at not historic lows, but, but they're, they're not as high as they were five, six years ago. We're trying to talk to the contractor who did our paving last year, see if he'll hold his rate for last year. And, and then we'll put a list together, and there's a whole pavement index, PCI, that goes about, and, and we look at it. And as soon as the, the winter conditions are, are done, they take a quick drive around to make sure there's no other roads that are needed that have deteriorated further than what they are in the PCI. Barbara?
So just a clarification, for the roads that you mentioned that were paved, that's not necessarily the entire road? Because I know the entire length of Backriver Road is not paved.
It's sections of the road.
Yeah.
It's, we do sections of the road. We, they look at the PCI and they've, they break out the PCI in sections like Wire Road. There might be three sections of Wire Road, and one section might be paved, like, one section might be from Baboosook Lake Road to the bridge. Another section might be from the bridge to the four-way, and then the four-way stop sign to the town line. So they'll break out the roads in certain sections, and they do PCI based on those sections, and where they need to be paved, they pave. And over the years, as you can see, there's been a number of roads since 2016 that have been paved. Some gravel roads that, we have 16 gravel roads in Merrimack. Grading and reshaping of gravel roads, it uses about 300 to 400 man-hours each year. Our grader is scheduled for replacement in the 2223 timeframe. We're estimating it costs $275,000. What we're looking to do initially is maybe target some roads, Green Pond, Fuller Mill, and Lester Road. I know these roads are not the most traveled roads, but these roads, the, other, other gravel roads within town actually need some additional work. It's not just a pave coat. It's drainage, it's reshaping it, it's, it's right-of-way access, things of that sort. So these roads are, other than gravel roads, are, are the cleanest gravel roads to get paved if we were to move with gravel road paving.
Winard? Peter?
Paul, when this came up a couple of years ago, I questioned it. I agree, Greens Pond Road has been, become a busy thoroughfare, and that, I think that does, it's due for it to be paved. But I see roads like Fuller Mill and Lester. And I think there's like two houses on Lester, three houses, and two or three houses on Fuller Mill. And I, and I think about up by the lake, where there are more houses up there. And I know that there's a lot going on up there with the small roads and the cottages. But it just seems, I, priorities wa, priority-wise, I think we really should look at that. Because I, you know, and I get what you're saying, we have to grade these roads and stuff, but I just, I don't think, you know, I guess, I'm, I'm hesitant on some of these smaller roads to do that.
Well, we do have some time to look at this. This, this is out, in the CIP, this is out in the 2425 timeframe, so we do have some time to look at it. But I did wanna bring it up to the council that we are looking at some of these gravel roads, and we'll take that input back. I'm sure Don will take that input back and, and look into the other gravel roads as well. And make up priority lists.
And you also pointed out, I believe, that some of these roads, not only the road itself, but the drainage issues and, and things like that, some additional infrastructure improvement is really required on, to do anything to those roads, so it becomes a, a trade offer, I guess, an expense factor as well.
Oh, and, and when the topic came up around, up around the lake, the, the number for that job was, that's a big number.
Yeah, right.
On Lester Road, I don't know how many potential developable lots, lots there might be. But if it's large enough, it might be a situation where in order for the construction to occur, the contractor may take care of that. I don't know what's available there, though. So putting it off, because of the low travel currently, might be worthwhile for another-
And, and we can look into all those things. And if there is a development going in, that's something, because I believe some of that stuff does come through DPW. And they can look at that and make that recommendation that they pave sort of like what happened with Old Blood Road. Right. We just had to pave that section in the middle. Developer paved the beginning section, developer paved the end section, we just had to pave it in the middle. And it could be something similar, maybe at Lester Road, too, if the developer comes in there. I'm sorry if you can't hear me, I'll speak up a little bit. I heard you. Wire Road intersection right now, that's on for the 202223. And what we're looking at there is to get that, some development going on. Because in conjunction with the Wire Road intersection, there's also the bridge replacement that is happening in 2324 of the Route 3 Baboosook Brook Bridge Replacement. So this is something that we wanna have plans in place and ready to go. It looks like what's gonna happen there, it's gonna be federal funding.
I just pointed out, it's roundabout on that.
Thank you, Council Harrington, I saw that as well. Thank you.
Yes.
Can we get that changed before the next presentation?
I, yes, I will make sure that the next time this comes up, we do not see any roundabout.
It's a rotary.
Rotary.
Did not, not, since we're just talking about the rotary. I thought Kyle had testified a year ago, or 18 months ago, that from an engineering standpoint, that doesn't work.
Right.
He has, but everything's on the table still.
Okay.
Because nothing's been designed or finalized.
Okay.
So it probably, we, that, that roundabout or rotary area will be, it's, it won't work, I don't think. And I think that's how Kyle testified, too, because of the traffic light and the traffic flows between Baboosook Lake Road and DW Highway there. And then having, having a roundabout rotary so close, the traffic would still back up, and it wouldn't flow like it was supposed to flow. But-
We did notice that, yeah.
Right down the middle.
It was also, I think Kyle-
Yeah. Circular devices.
I think Kyle also pointed out, for the traffic flow, it would have to be two lanes, which made it too wide.
Too wide, that's correct. For the whole area. But every, all options are on the table still because it hasn't been designed, but once it's been designed and it's designed. The Merrimack Boat, the River Boat Ramp Access over by Griffin Street, the Griffin Street Boat Ramp, we've, we've talked about that in, in the goal sessions, we've talked about a lot of those. We're looking at fishing game on a 50/50% match for the boat ramp. There are some, as you know, there's some work that needs to be done from the railroad tracks to the boat ramp itself to be completed. And that, we're looking at, that's also looking at 2223. So we're talking a couple of years out on, on this project as well, and with design and other things. Be coming back in front of the council, once this gets a little bit closer to actually funding and to give the council an update on the design of the boat ramp and, and how we're gonna get things moving. And I, I don't know for a fact that it's been built yet, but Nashua was putting in a boat ramp at Greeley Park. And we were hoping that they built that boat ramp so that the larger boats would utilize that boat ramp. And we could have the smaller boats, if we, from Merrimack, utilize our boat ramp. So, but that's still in the works, and that will all be during the planning process when we do come forward to council with a presentation on this. And then we do have a tap grant application going forward. And this is another, like I said, this is all part of the sidewalk and, and infrastructure. We're gonna apply for these tap grants if, if they get the tap grant for a project and they do this in conjunction with the Town Center Committee. If we do get, if we do get the, the tap grant, then of course, it all comes back in front of the council. And council has final approval on whether or not they wanna accept the tap grant. And, but we were getting a presentation together once we know what project they're bringing forward for the tap grant. Because that tap grant submission needs Town Council approval. So I just wanted to bring that up. It's, we're looking at potentially at another sidewalk project. And I don't know which sidewalk the Town Center Committee will be presenting to move forward with, with that project. The sewer line extension, we have, we have a sewer line extension master plan that, that was developed. And one of the areas of, of next is the Nattacook Lake East Collector, Mayflower Drive Collector, and the Question Road Collectors. With the developer putting, upgrading, fixing, the interceptor from, on the, the sewer line on Baboosook Lake Road by Madeline Bennett, some of these plans have changed of where the sewer lines would be going. And bring, it would come down to that, that sewer line. That's in Baboosook Lake Road instead of going out towards Jessica Drive, trying to be picked up, up Jessica Drive and then out. So there's some design that we still need to do, but these are the next projects. But we're estimating this is like a 1.7 million dollar project, 1.8 million. And we're looking at potentially bonding this sewer line expansion project in the 2223 year.
Yeah, Peter?
Paul, who, I guess I'm looking at these three neighborhoods, I'm just curious, how did we come to decide on those neighborhoods?
They're, they're in the master plan, the master plan reeks projects based on the number of factors, including onsite sewage treatment, access to existing sewer collections. These are the next priorities two and three. Is Mayflower is priority number three, but Question's priority number two. So they were already developed when we did the sewer master plan in 2015. The number one priority is, is very expensive. Extremely expensive.
I guess it leads me to the question of do the people that live in these neighborhoods know this, that have existing sewers, I mean, septic? And some of them may be close to replacing them, and then not realize that this is two, three years down the road. And so they spend $20,000 on a new septic- And so they spend twenty thousand dollars on a new septic system. And we, are we gonna require them to, we're gonna build this pipe and require them to attach to it?
There, there is a caveat in the sewer ordinance for connection that deals with, um, replace septic systems. I am not versed in the exact language, but I know there is a caveat that if somebody replaces their septic system within so many years, that they, they come in and get a waiver. And it could be a waiver for, for a couple of years, but if their system is failing, they have to.
I guess where I'm going with this two is two things. One, we should really focus on letting these people know it's coming. And two, you know, if we find out that you, you get a number of, you know, half the neighborhood, three quarters of the neighborhood doesn't want to hook in, why are we doing the project? Something just food for thought on deciding the neighborhoods and, and letting them know ahead of time. I know that, um, you know, you, you think about it and you see, I had a septic at one time in the neighborhood near Baboosok Lake Road. And I was always hoping that somehow or another that it would come up my road. But then my neighbors and I discussed it and said, geez, we just replaced them all, I wouldn't want to hook up, I just spent twenty thousand on it.
We do go out when the project gets closer, they, the DPW does go out when, and, and sends out a public hearing notice and brings them in to show people of the project themselves.
I mean, I want it to be successful, I think you gotta go directly to that neighborhood and, I don't know, maybe send out a letter to the residents or something.
Don, you want to explain what the process is?
Yes, we do go, we do send out letters when it gets closer to the time. Right now, it's too, still a little bit too far out. Until we get the plans better designed, or more designed, I should say. They have, if they've put in a septic system within the last, I believe it's twenty years, but don't hold me to that. They can put in a waiver that it, their system is in good working order. And then they have five years from that point, but it is law that they have to tie in. If the sewer goes by, they have to tie in.
I just want to see a piece of session.
Yes, but there are criteria for exceptions if they have had to do something. But if it's two or three years out and they need to fix their septic system now, they need to fix their septic system. Because it's not going to last for that much longer. And then we'll be in violation of the MS four if we, you know, if they don't fix the septic system, because that's one of the parts, so.
Thank you.
Barbara?
Yeah, a twenty, twenty-five year old septic system still has a lot of life in it. And when, as we looked at when Blood Road or the new sewerage was done up near O'Gara, up by the, uh, the middle school. That's a shock when people look at having to spend multi-thousands of dollars to hook up. Because it's not only, it, what kills them is the length of, of the pipe that they've got to get out to the sewer. And then they've got to decommission their septic system and that doesn't come cheap either. So I think people really need to have a lot of head start with the thought process that this is coming. And by law, they have to hook in unless they are lucky enough to get the exemption. But five years isn't very long for an exemption.
Finley?
Not to make this the issue of the night, but I totally agree, it's, and I've always had a heartburn over it. My septic system was replaced two summers ago and it was built in seventy-six, it was an original. But it was treated well and babied. So I'm of the opinion that if it's, if it's been deemed by a professional that it's in good working order, then it's in good working order. But you're right, I, I thought the year was actually nineteen eighty-five, if it was built after that, because it's newer standards. But I don't, I'm not sure on that.
It might be, I might be confused in the state regulations.
Right. Right, but to your point, as you, for Peter's, I get his desire to say, hey, wait three more years, we'll have a line in here. But if it's in failure, it's in failure, it has to be redone anyhow, so.
Okay, Eileen?
I, I think that, um, I can, I agree with what Peter's saying that unless there's a situation in the area that is messing us up in terms of environmental issues of near water bodies, et cetera, that we shouldn't, in this particular town, um, you know, there's a lot of septic systems and people are used to septic systems and they should actually be surveyed as to whether or not they want, uh, you know, they want sewerage, because if we're gonna do a bond for a several, you know, a couple of million bucks or one, even a million dollars. And people don't want it, um, and it's not really required because, for any environmental reasons. I, rather than going through the exercise of, um, partial design and then having a public hearing, I think the public hearing should be to ask peop- for people's input and actually even do a survey, do you want one? You know, do you as a, you know, collectively want one?
Well, the one, the one is on a water, water body, so that would, I suspect that would be an impact. But the Question Road, oh, there's the Baboosok Brook, I think, there's a brook that goes through there, so.
There's a brook that goes down behind Jessica across.
Right, is it Baboosok Brook or? No, it's not Natta, no, it's not Baboosok Brook, yeah.
But it goes across, um, Turkey Hill and then leads out to Natta Cook, Natta Cook River. Catches into Natta Cook and Natta Cook comes down, so.
So let me just, we need to be careful, though, when you, when you say you want to start asking, if one person objects, do you not do it? If ten people object, do you not do it? I mean, at what point do you make a decision that has to go forward? It's some, somewhere you have to kind of weigh that out, right? I mean, so we can let everybody know, we can ask their opinions, but, um, we have to be a little careful about having people think that, well, I can object and it won't happen. When there's twenty or other people that maybe have failing systems and want it to happen or something like that, so there's a balance here somewhere. Eileen, you wanted to say something?
Well, you know, as I said, it's, uh, it, it's a matter of, if it, if it needs to be done, then it needs to be done for environmental reasons and we should push forward with that and encourage people to, you know, get behind it and that kind of thing. But if we're just putting in sewer to put in sewer so that there's more, uh, public sewer in, in the town, it really should be of, you know, you don't, I don't know, I ju- I just, it just doesn't seem very democratic that you would, unless you had a bunch of people like we've had in the past in a particular neighborhood that said, hey, listen, we're having issues here and we need to, we need to consider public sewer, I don't know why we would initiate it.
Yeah, I can't imagine why we would initiate it if it wasn't necessary for the general area.
Right.
I'm just saying, we have to be a little cautious and all that. But clearly, if we're bonding one or two or three million dollars to extend sewer to forty houses or less or something, there's, there's a big issue as to whether the town's going to support that bond to begin with, uh, because so many people quote unquote, don't see the benefit.
In fact, there is a history, because I remember it, because it was our neighborhood. And, um, it was defeated. It was, I believe it was a two million dollar bond and the rest of the town says, well, we don't have a problem, we're not gonna do it, so.
Nothing in it for me, yeah.
That's right, it's not my bad cat, so, literally.
It was the first, it was that town meeting, they wanted, you know, everybody said, yes, we want you to do it. And so they did all the work preparing for it, they brought it to town meeting, and they said, what, are you crazy, we don't want that?
Exactly right.
That was a long time ago.
But you remember.
I do remember it.
So I, so that's the issue, it's a very, and, and so what do you do at that point? You've gone through all this design and six of one.
And it's expensive to extend sewer, you know, we have as much as we do because of federal grants back in the, what, sixties and seventies or something like that? But that all dried up ages and ages ago. Sorry, we strung that one out quite a bit, thanks, Paul.
It's okay, no, it, it's actually good to hear because now we can take those back and, and listen to what the council, how the council feels and, and make a plan, um, moving forward. I don't want to bore you, I have a number of slides for other major projects that are out, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-six, twenty-seven. What I want to do is I just want to highlight some of the major ones that we've discussed all along. The US Route Three Bridge over Baboosok Brook looks like twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five. And that's in the tune of about three million, six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That is the estimate that we have now. Once final design gets there and the state approves it, that number is sure to be much higher than, because of, um, of the way, with the temporary bridge. And from what I've been told, it's going to be a two-lane temporary bridge on DW. So there's not going to be a detour. So the traffic on DW will stay on DW, it'll just be on a two-lane bridge. That's what we, we've been hearing. And with that, that's why it's over a two-year period, because it's going to take almost a, one season to construct the temporary bridge and then another season to construct the actual bridge, once the temporary bridge is in place and operating. Another one is the bridge rehabilitation on South Heagan River at Chamberlain Bridge. We're looking at twenty-five, twenty-six for that. If you remember, we talked about that, because that's in conjunction with the River Trail. The River Trail will be doing some of the initial repair to some of the structure. This is the remaining portion of that structure that needs to be repaired.
Before you go on, the, the bridge replacement on US Three, if you know that estimate is off, can we update the estimate? Just so we're not throwing around a three million dollar number when we think it's going to be five?
Yes, we'll look into that some more, because I think, uh, some of this stuff came out in the last month or so, about a two-lane.
We can bring it next week with our presentations for our budgets. We can bring it next week with our presentations for the budgets.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We'll give you updates on all of the numbers.
All right, thank you.
So yes, we'll look at that. There's, um, the pedestrian bridge, that's a, really a placeholder, um, and it's out in twenty-six, twenty-seven. That's replacement of that, the bridge over the South Heagan River. There's, library has a bunch of projects that are placeholders. Library is moving forward with, um, an architect on, uh, on, on four, uh, four phases of, of the library. One is, um, rehab of the current library. A second phase is moving the library to one location. A third one is moving the library to a, a different location. And the fourth one is tying in a town center with the John O'Leary Community Center and, and a library. So they're looking at those, um, and they, they have an architect that they have, uh, they have a contract with. And I believe it's going to be next week or the week after that, they're going to start presenting them with some initial designs that they have created. Community development, the master plan is, is rolling around and that's in the twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe. It seems like, uh, just yesterday that we completed the master plan, um, for, for that. And we're still trying to do some of the implementation with that master plan, but it's coming around again in the twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe. And then the next one is, is parks and recreation, athletic fields. There's looking at some, uh, probably, if, if we move ahead with athletic fields, that's definitely probably going to have to be a bond. Especially if it pertains to, uh, buying some land to go along with it. If we have to buy land, then we're gonna have to bond an athletic field. If, uh, we have land, the costs are, we probably can look at doing it through a capital reserve to developing an athletic field, depending on the cost. So, and I gave you some slide backup there. I do want to hit upon the, uh, the sewer. And there's several, um, several, uh, capital improvements in the sewer fund, the major projects. One of them is, is a relocation of a sewer connection that we have underneath the FEA return pike. We're going to be doing that in conjunction with the widening of the FEA return pike. And we're estimating that to happen in twenty-two, twenty-three in a tune of about five hundred thousand dollars. We've been saving for that all along, that's all been part of the rate study. That's all been part of what we've been putting into the capital reserve fund for, for sewer. As you know, we're, we're doing the upgrade to the plant in the out years. We got to look at some pump station renovations at Penachuck, Pearson Road. Pearson Road would be, um, in conjunction with Bedford. Bedford will be paying the majority of that, uh, rehab out there. They, uh, that's out by the Bedford Town Line and that's put in for that Greenfield Parkway, uh, development. And they, Bedford pays for, um, anything rehabbing that eight percentage wise. Then we have Burt Street, Heron Cove, those are the remaining pump stations in town. They're not in this twenty-two million dollar project that we're doing. Those will have to be looked at and upgraded, um, in, in those out years. There's a telemetry project, uh, for pump station connections and we're looking in, uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four. And then a skater upgrade in twenty-one, twenty-two. That's all in conjunction with, um, with the upgrades that are happening with the plant. We, we're doing those separately because we want the equipment in those pump stations that we're doing with this plant, plant upgrade to be in place. And then we're going to put the skater in place. And what the skater is, is the skater, uh, years ago, wastewater had, used to have three shifts, around the clock shifts. Well, by implementing the skater, they went to a one-shift operation with a person on call. And the skater is basically a device that says, okay, if there's trouble in a pump station, a device goes out, it comes back to the main, the main wastewater treatment plant and then it goes, it gets pinged out to whoever's on call saying, there's a problem at Thorne's Ferry Pump Station or Burt Street. And then the person on call can see what the problem is and fix the problem as needed. That's the skater system. The, uh, telemetry project is basically the same thing, it's, it's tying everything in with the computers.
Paul, um, you just, I just kind of piqued my curiosity with the telemetry upgrade. And I started thinking about, um, we had discussions with the fire department about some areas of concern for them with their radios. Are these locations, I don't know anything about this telemetry, are these locations that we could use, the communications division could use to increase coverage or enhance coverage for their radios, repeaters?
They, they are, they are a town-owned property, the, as you heard last night by Chief Levac, they're doing a study. All these properties, all the town-owned properties were given to the company Motorola, excuse me, to look at. And I don't know if these can be used or not used, I don't know where, you know, if they're high, if they're low, um, and things of that sort. But they're all going to be looked at and if, potentially, if we have to put an antenna or something in there, if we own enough property, they would be able to be used.
Yeah, if, uh, talk, maybe communications, talks, fire, police, whatever, and.
Yeah, but all those, all these locations were given to Motorola.
Yep.
Town locations to see if they can coexist with, uh, with, uh, a tower or additional radio.
Just food for thought to mention to fire and police.
Yep, and then the last one is a placeholder, it's a nutrient removal, uh, system. And, and that's a placeholder for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year. So funding, major funding is if, when. Major funding in, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we're looking to expend about one million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars from capital reserve funds. Another, uh, one million, one hundred thousand dollars in, um, twenty-two, twenty-three. Funded through the budgets, three million, six seventy-five and, uh, one million, one twenty-five respectively. Bonding is seven million, eight hundred and thirty-one and one million, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. There's the rural improvement capital, uh, road improvement fund, which is that five dollar fee on each registration for paving. That's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each year. We have a private donation in twenty-one, twenty-two of six hundred and fifty. Federal aid, um, in twenty-one, twenty-two of seven hundred and eighty and twenty-two, twenty-three of two hundred and sixty-six, nine hundred and twenty. And then the wastewater user fees and bonds in twenty-one, twenty-two, a hundred and fifty thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, um, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So there are, like I said, there's a lot of projects out moving around and, and working through. Well, the biggest one was the, um, was the safety complex, which seems like we're gonna have to postpone it one year, because we won't be ready to go out to bond in less than two months. So a lot of that, the, the bonding and, and some of the funding through the budget will be passed, moved, moved out one more year, so.
So that's the two and a half million for the public safety complex that's in the twenty-one, twenty-two list of major funds?
Yes.
And we were planning to run that straight through the budget?
Well. Well, not to get-
Hopefully not this year, but-
No, not, not to get into the budget. It was, it was the, um, we have a couple of buildings and without getting deep into it, because we haven't got deep into the project, what we were thinking is that there might be some opportunity, um, with those two buildings and using some of that money. And that's why it's funded through the budget. It would offset the cost of the project.
Okay.
It's a, it's a generally accepted accounting principle, um, that we would have to do to, to utilize if we were able to get some funds for those buildings.
But you're telling me you're not talking about that now? And the twenty-one, twenty-two budget is the one we're talking about?
Right, but we're, we're pushing that out. But when we were, when we were designing this in August and September, we thought we'd be further along than we are.
All right.
I-
In relationship to that, John, will we be getting a revised expense on the reserves?
Since the capital improvement plan is just that, it's, it's a plan. It's not a, we use it as a budgeting tool as well, but it's a plan. Um, on the twenty-first of, um, January, we're still in January, twenty-first of January, I'll be presenting the new capital funds expenditures in each capital reserve, what we're looking at to withdraw.
Okay, because Nancy, Nancy, your mic?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I have my finger there.
That's what I, I saw that and then the light flashed.
Sorry about that. So with the twenty-one, twenty-two, if I'm understanding correctly, that bond amount will be revised?
Correct.
Okay, that's my question.
Yes.
And the other quick one is the private donation. Is that the Simon?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Now although the first two-
The money that had been donated by Simon for fire.
Right.
Right, okay.
The, the items underneath the major projects, items number one and number two are going to be postponed one year, so we'll move that.
Right, so that will modify-
That will modify the total column.
Thank you.
And what I'll do is I'll come back with a new expenditure on the twenty-first as being transparent in the budget process, even though they get brought in, they're not because of DRA.
So the twenty-first was going to be a discussion to talk about fire department and personnel?
Fire department and personnel.
And you're also going to bring in capital reserve fund issues?
Yeah, the, the last capital reserve fund issue, I, I, we'd do it that night as well, to tie the budget up before town council decides to deliver it, sonnet.
All right. Any other questions at this point on capital reserve funds or CIP, excuse me?
So-
I forget what we're talking about.
That, that, that is the major portion of the capital improvements plan. Now we move to the minor portion and a lot of this is, I, I condensed a lot of this into just year one and year two, which is twenty-twenty-one is year one, twenty-two, twenty-three is year two. Um, the, the revale, as you see, is in there for seventy-five and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's more going to be like around a hundred thousand dollars total. Um, and then it's very hard to pick up the yellow on the screen and I, I apologize, but yellow for us is, is something coming out of the budget. So building and grounds is looking for a fourth, uh, new dump truck and plow, um, and they're looking to do that in twenty-two, twenty-three and, uh, for around fifty thousand dollars.
That's for around here, this building?
Yeah, around this building.
They need a dump truck?
Yeah, uh, they, they need a dump truck, uh, for, uh, the mulch and, uh, other things. They have a sander in the back of it. They put a sander in the back of the truck. They use it for the mulch in the summertime, um, going around there. There's other options-
Good.
-out there, um, that I've been trying to work on with them, um, whether they can reuse a highway truck that-
Yeah.
-might be getting a little long in the tooth for that kind of plowing, but can still work with-
Still do parking lots.
Parking lots and, and being able to dump.
Yeah.
You know, and things of that sort. So there, there's other options there as well. Um, the big thing is the sprinkler system at town hall, um, and that's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar estimate right now. Uh, we've been getting several leaks in the pipes. Uh, the system that's in place right now is, uh, is getting a little bit old. Um, as you know, this year we replaced the two valves in the, in the, um, the pump room for, uh, because they were leaking, uh, but there's been several leaks throughout the building for, in piping and we've been fixing them as they come up. Um, the, our current contractor said that it's getting, the, the system, some of the piping in the system needs to be replaced. And, uh, that was looking in twenty-two, twenty-three of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Is that because it's difficult to get to?
Difficult to get to because it's in ceilings. It's, it's not exposed or in basements. It's all within drop ceilings and things of that sort. So they got to come in, take out the drop ceiling, replace the pipes and then, yeah, so there's a, it's a lot more labor intensive than if they were in just a, that when we renovated this building here, it was a lot easier because it was wide open when they were able to do it.
Yeah, but drop ceilings are not that expensive, I wouldn't think, to just replace the dang thing and whatever. I mean, they'll do the best they can, I'm sure.
Right. And right now that's an estimate. We haven't, we haven't specked out the project. We haven't really dove into it, um, but we will be in the next nine months.
And there's not a capital reserve fund that could cover that?
No, we don't have a capital reserve fund for repairs at town hall.
For building maintenance?
Yeah, no, we do not.
Go on.
Peter?
Um, Paul, I, just a couple of things jumped out on me in the minor projects. The portable inflatable boat the fire department's looking at, I'm just curious, I was just, I happen to be looking at FEMA is offering grants, um, as well as homeland security. And I'm aware in government surplus, I did a homeland security grant at one point and tried to convince the chief about getting a boat for the police department. He wasn't buying it, but I know that they have those available. Um, so it might be a way to save twelve thousand dollars if they can get, uh, a grant on that. So I know they're offering grants this year, so. The other thing is I see the police department's motorcycle for fifteen thousand.
Hmm.
And I, I knew last year we didn't approve it and I saw the budget come in this year. It wasn't on there?
It's not approved. It's not in.
Okay, so that's-
It's not in there.
That's a mistake.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's not in there, nope. There's no motorcycle taken out of this year's budget and it was not put in for the current budget that we're, we presented last night.
All right.
All right. Um, just a couple of other things here, um, pretty much standard stuff, but those were a couple of things I want to bring your attention. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is, uh, this, um, simulcast system for the radios and communications. We got a quick estimate from one of the vendors. It was about five hundred thousand dollars. So we do have some money in the capital reserve fund for that project. Um, we actually are doing a study to see what we really need, because I just don't want to keep on throwing money at the, throwing money, throwing money, throwing money, throwing money-
At radios.
-at this, at this project or at this problem. Um, so we actually, the company Motorola is going to do a study for us as we talked about what, last night. So, but it's estimated to be about five hundred thousand dollars. It could be more, it could be less, depending on, um, height of towers and things of that sort. Uh, the other thing is-
So before you go on, you made a comment earlier that, or somewhere, that a hundred thousand dollars is the cutoff for major projects, but sometimes minor projects go into that number. That's, that's way into it as well as a one and a half million bond further down.
Right.
Why are they minors?
Those are minors because it's equipment.
Okay.
Planning board, planning board made the decision long ago not to take up the town's equipment. They don't, they don't want to know about, um, dispatch centers and things of that sort. They want it, or, or fire trucks or rolling stock or dump trucks, and that's why they're, they're in the minor program is because they, the major program goes to the planning board. The minor program stays here with the town council.
Okay, thanks.
So talking about the, uh, one point five million dollars, that's a, it's our ladder truck. That was presented back when, uh, the approval of the seventy-five thousand dollars. The, there's still some more information that we need on that ladder truck. It's a, I believe it's a two thousand. Um, it's twenty years old. It's an American La France. It's, company's out of business. It's very costly to repair. It's very costly to get the parts. Um, so, but there's more information to come to the council, but I did want to say that that, that's, that's something that we're looking at. And I know I've been saying this a lot tonight, but over the next nine months, these are things that have to be looked at. And if they're not looked at, they won't be there next year when we do this. They'll be pushed out one more year. But didn't want, I didn't want to come to the council next year if it's there and for the council to be surprised, like, what are you talking about? Five hundred thousand dollars for, for the simulcast system?
More radios.
Uh, radios or things of that sort. So some, some of the stuff in year two, there's a lot of more detail that is needed, but I did want to bring it forward to the council to know that those are the projects that are on the horizon. Um, we do have, uh, some trucks, some dump trucks, some pickup trucks, uh, things of that sort. Um, you know, library's doing carpet replacement, dock replacement, um, you know, there's some roof repairs that we, we talked about. Matt would like to do Wasserman Park irrigation. Um, like I said, there's a lot more work out there for the year, you know, that project that's in the year two. It still needs to, a lot more work needs to be done on that, but it is, he's looking at a cost of about sixty-two thousand dollars. If times were good, yes, but I see that project as being delayed unless it's one hundred percent needed for, for, for something. Uh, but these are, these are things, you know, the patrol cars are in there. Um, the motorcycle's in there, but that's a typo. That should have been a zero instead of fifteen, um, thousand. Uh, the, uh, so, the big thing is solid waste. The, uh, the trailers, they're replacing a trailer and they do have a pickup truck that they're, they're looking to replace that's getting old. Um, I call it campus Wi-Fi town hall. I don't know if that's the right terminology, but there needs to be more connectivity between the buildings. And as, as we know, with our Zoom calls, we're in the middle of a call and I'm getting the message flashing on my screen, Wi-Fi low, Wi-Fi low, signal low, signal low, and we don't, we haven't moved. We're in the same conference room that we've been in before and it's just, so we're looking at, into that a little bit. And then, um, technology with our Microsoft, we're potentially looking at going with three sixty-five. Once the technology quantity comes in, that's one of the first things that person will need to do is look at as well as a lot, a host of other things, but look at our exchange, look at our licenses for our Microsoft and see what's best option for, for the town moving forward.
Does forty-six thousand is an annual expense for Microsoft three sixty?
Yeah, yeah.
Versus buying it out and then replacing it in three years or four years or something like that?
Yeah, three, three to five years, yeah. So that, those are, those are the cost benefit analysis that need to be run, um, with it. Honestly, what, what has happened in the years past is that we get with our exchange server, we get the version and then we have to replace it six, seven, eight years later when it's end of life. And then it's very costly because now we're two or three generations gone. So now we have to upgrade here, here and here to get to here. So, um, so-
So you ought to be able to do a cost analysis to look at the, the difference there.
The difference on that, and that's one of the projects that, uh, the IT coordinator will be definitely looking at.
Will be taking on.
Taking on.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, there's some user fees that we do, we looking at, uh, really the only big, big expense coming out of the user fee, which is the sewer fund, is, um, a caterpillar nine, ten loader. Um, if you remember a couple of years ago, we, we replaced two caterpillars, um, with two John Deere. There's one that's left that needs to be replaced. And we'd be looking at that same kind of replacement, um, with, with either a used machine or a gently-used machine or a new machine, so, for that loader. Um, and that's used in the waste, um, in the compost facility. Those loaders are used for compost.
So can I ask a quick question on number six for wastewater, the Ford Explorer pre-treatment manager?
Right.
What, what do you mean by replacement cost of thirty thousand and then in year two, twenty-five thousand? What, why is there a difference in those numbers?
Uh, because that was the estimated replacement cost is thirty thousand dollars, but we're looking through state bids and other avenues and we think we can get a vehicle for around twenty-five.
And the same thing below that at twenty-five and fifteen, you just-
Yeah, for a Focus. And that's the Ford Focus. Okay.
And why do they need a Ford Explorer?
Uh, because they do go to the, um-
Off-road.
Off-road into the treatment plants-
Okay.
And the pump station, not the treatment plants, the pump stations. And, uh, just because it says pre-treatment manager, it's not just their vehicle. It's-
It's everybody's.
Everybody's vehicles.
Just checking?
Yeah, but that's why, no, because they, they do go off into the, uh, pump stations and things of that sort and do check some sewer manholes in the trails. Um, and then the next one is, is, uh, media. And as Nicholas mentioned, there's some upgrades for Matthew Thornton room, this room here, some equipment for twenty-five and some staff hardware needs to be replaced for about fifteen thousand dollars. The, uh, total, we're looking at about nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollars out of capital reserve funds in twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three about six hundred and fifty-one thousand. Funded through budgets about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars and nine hundred and sixty-one thousand respectively. Uh, bonds is mostly in twenty-two, twenty-three of the one million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. User fees, um, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand and seventy-seven, five hundred respectively. And then franchise fees is, uh, fifty-five, we try to keep it around fifty-five thousand dollars a year for equipment replacements. So that's what we're looking at, um, for capital reserve funds, um, not capital reserve funds, um, the capital improvement plan. Like I said, I, um, next year, hopefully we can get this to the council a little bit sooner and we become, once we get back to some normalcy, whatever that might be. And I know it's a little tricky because we're in the middle of budgets and we've talked about a lot of this stuff and we're, we're coming in front of the council now. The one change that we did do from years past is that it used to go to town council first and then to the planning board. The charter actually says it should go to the planning board and then the town council. And this year we went from the planning board to the town council.
So the planning board's gone through this entire list and at least the majors?
The majors and they've, and I have included that with their, their recommendations as they see fit. And most of the recommendations from the planning board, I believe, are desirable. There's a couple that are, um, necessary, but, um, necessary and desirable. There's some that they, they do agree when with, with telling it's a placeholder, that is, it is, uh, can be a placeholder. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't see any other questions at this point. I, we've been pestering you with questions through this whole thing, so thank you.
No problem.
Not me.
Well, thank you.
Um, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
We appreciate the, uh, the thoroughness.
How are you doing, I think?
Is it cold in here or is it just me?
You.
What?
It's cold in here, but it's just me.
It's just you.
Aren't the ghosts, I told-
You have a jacket right behind you.
I said, there's got to be a ghost over that side of the road.
Did it come here and say we can see? What? Hold on.
You can explain sewer expansion to us.
It'd be a lot of fun.
Um, cool. Minutes. We have minutes from, it says here December seventeenth, but, oh, the twenty-first because that was postponed from December seventeen. So we have minutes from the December twenty-one meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would move, God bless you. Mr. Chairman, I would move the Monday, December twenty-first, two thousand twenty council, town council meeting minutes with one change.
When?
One change, unless Council Haley has several. Page two, paragraph three, in the parentheses where it says name not given, the individual's name was Ginger Held, H-E-A-L-D.
Can you spell that again?
Sure. H is in hotel, E is in echo, A is in alpha, L is in Lincoln, D is in delta. Ginger Held.
Ginger?
Ginger, that's correct.
Does anybody else have any corrections? Marber?
On the same page, page-
On the same page, page two, last paragraph where it says Council Harrington. Right under there, it talks about the Commission for the Environmental Public Health Impacts of the PFA chemicals. It should be PFAS. Capital P, capital F, capital A, capital S.
I thought that looked pretty weird.
Is that it?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Page seven. Fourth paragraph where it starts, Assistant Town Manager, Finance Director, Paul McHally. Third sentence down, he stressed to the Town Council that the center is not currently
Being?
B, it should be being. And then, you know, this is just an observation, especially on page eight. She has to like type finance, you know, Assistant Town Manager, Finance Director, Paul McHally, like eight times, seven times. I always thought that once you name the person and you give them their correct title, after that, you can just say Mr. McHally. Which is a lot shorter to type all the time
Yep.
than repeating and repeating, repeating his full title. Just wondering how the council feels on that. It'll make Tracy's life probably a little easier.
Or whoever Tracy did. So I mean, because, because they go through and constantly say Chair Boyd or Counselor Albert or something like that.
Yeah, but it's not as long as
Well, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out, what do you replace it with? It would seem not right to just call out his name only, but I mean, maybe we could abbreviate to ATM slash FD. Once we identified it early on or something like that.
You can do that.
Whatever. I just thought I'd bring it up.
Okay. I don't usually read these quite so carefully, so bear with me. But on the first paragraph, first page, in the first paragraph talking about Dick Hench. Third from the bottom, it says he explained that he got no dick while serving. We ought to put two in there. And then on the next page, in the first paragraph, the second line towards the end, it says, Town Manager Eileen Cabanel stated that Dick Hench was inspiration to her. Was an inspiration to her?
Inspirational.
Inspirational.
Or was inspirational to her through his kindness and effectiveness? Is that, so it changed it to was inspirational. Okay. And you got Ginger Held. In the one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph, third line, it starts with recognize that Dick has touched so many people. It had an ED on the end of touch. So that it sounds, touch so many just doesn't sound right. Excuse me. And on page eight, it talks about Chairman Kane calling the meeting into recess, but it never has this returning from recess. If you can just add a line saying we returned from recess.
I had that one. I missed it.
Oh, okay. And then I remember, because the vote tally was different, because Lon Woods left during the comments from the council. I finally found the line in there, but if we could separate that and maybe highlight it or something, just so it's obvious that the vote tally would be different if it's not everybody here. So that's all I had to comment on. Any other suggestions or changes?
Yeah, while I was scanning, I actually missed one. Page two, paragraph two, line two. It reads, appreciate that Dick will listen to people regardless of political. Should be political.
Anybody else saying none, we'll call for a vote on, did we get a motion, a second on your motion?
There you go.
Motion was made by Bill to accept with corrections and seconded by Peter. If there's no other additions, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as corrected, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? You're gonna abstain, Barbara?
I was absent.
Okay. That's six, zero, one with Barbara Healy abstaining. Which brings us to comments from the press or the public, and now comments from the council. Bill?
Yeah, very quickly, alluding to Eileen's comments regarding the anticipated promotion of Sean Brektel from captain to assistant chief? Thank you. Absolutely well deserved, but I also think one of the value that the captain brings as it relates to his EMS and paramedic work, as he has been a subject matter expert as it relates to COVID-19 and anything and everything that has to do pandemic. And quite honestly, he's not only been a leader amongst his peers and the staff in the Merrimack Fire Department, he's actually been recognized at the state level, I believe at a regional level as well, for his work as it relates to C-19. So you don't come across that type of passion and commitment to a, to a particular issue. And I just think congratulations to Captain Brektel for not only the work that he's done over the last year with this particular issue, but also educating his fellow, his fellow colleagues at the Fire Department. But not just specifically with those issues, but obviously, you know, as it relates to basic life support and advanced life support, the specific care issues that we ask the first responders to take care of. He's, you know, he's been a leader in that regard, so I'm really excited for him, and I think it's, it's really a benefit to the department. Huge benefit, so I think maybe I'm gonna get corrected by Eileen.
Could I add something while we're
Go right ahead, Council Harrington.
I'm really very I'm sorry. The other thing I'd like to add is I like the idea of a paramedic being an administrative leadership position.
I agree.
In equal footing with the firefighters. Because we all know that the majority of the calls are medical. And so it seems very appropriate that a paramedic be in that kind of position in order to be able to help guide things in the future. And I totally agree with you. Sean is a terrific candidate for that.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comments, Council.
Eileen?
I was just, I was gonna say something similar to what Nancy said, except to add to that, that we've actually changed the job description. You know, every time we have a big, big changes in a particular department, we look at, we look at the positions and take a look and see what is, what is actually happening right now? And what we do if we had to start all over again. And so, you know, during the course of, as you know, as, during the course of the discussion of the, you know, kind of team concept of the leadership at the Fire Department, we kind of collectively decided that it was important to have an assistant chief who was actually called out as EMS, as Nancy was saying and as Bill was saying. Because so many of the calls really are, and our future really relates to medical calls and medical expertise. So, you know, I concur with both of you. Thank you.
Does anybody else have comments from the council? Did you want to comment from the public or?
Oh, no, I haven't.
Just trying to get close to the door so you can get out of here. Oh. I just want to make a quick comment thanking you, Eileen, for your work as Town Manager. I know that sometimes when you have other people step in to do the job to make sure that there's always backup to your abilities or to any position. One of the things you do very well as our Town Manager is make sure that every position has got some kind of backup to it. And I really appreciate that. Sometimes it can be very difficult to turn things over to other people to give them a chance to, to understand what it's like to be in that hot seat. And so I appreciate your efforts in being able to make sure all of our departments are staffed and backed up to where they have leadership ready to move in if necessary. Heaven forbid a bus hits anybody, but we don't want to be in that kind of a position that we lose integrity or continuity because of anything that happens, including COVID, which is still happening. So I'll make my last plea for the night that people still, was that intentional? People still need to watch out, even though vaccines are being distributed. They're only in the very beginning stages still. We need to very much be careful about COVID-19 as best we can. Hopefully, as we heard from Matt Gasparis, hopefully, we'll be able to do summer camp this year and stuff. But we still have to get between here and May, and we're not looking to lose anybody in the meantime. So please be careful, social distance, wash your hands. All those good things. It's not gone, as much as we're all getting tired of it. Anyway, if there are no other comments? Eileen, do you have something?
The only thing that I wanted to say is, so to echo what you're saying, I want to say it was yesterday or the day before, there were forty-four hundred deaths in the United States from COVID in a day. So, you know, to echo your point, we're, we're at, it's difficult for all of us because we're at the point and we see this light at the end of the tunnel. And yet, we're at the, we're really at the peak of the crisis. So I, yeah, I concur with you that people need to make sure that they pay attention to all that. Because a vaccine won't cure COVID.
No, absolutely right. And as Len pointed out, we're still gonna be in our election time. We're still gonna be in the middle of all this. And so we're still gonna be looking at masks and Plexiglas and washing hands and social distancing and all that stuff. So this election will be much like our last election, and we just have to continue to be cautious and careful. If there's nothing else anybody wants to add, I could use a motion to adjourn. Motion by Nancy and seconded by Lon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That's it. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Seven, zero, zero.